All right, we're gonna get started. Just wanna introduce everybody to Tolka.
Yep.
And he is from the Greater Mohawk Valley Land Bank. He's here to join us today to talk about an appointment that we pick. It doesn't necessarily have to be a council member, but he's going to give us a quick rundown. There are a bunch of new council members. So if he could just go around quick and kind of tell him what district you're from and what your name is, that way that he knows who you are. I think it would help out greatly.
I'm Celeste Friend from South Utica, 3rd ward.
He's South Utica.
I'm Mark Williams, Councilor.
Delving Moody Fifth Ward, Cornhill.
I'll keep that with the petition.
Dr. Ransker, West Judithus.
Frank Millen, Work Council.
Frank DeBrango, Councilor.
That guy's Jack McMichael, Councilor. He's invisible right now, but he's there.
Him, Maria McNeil, 1st ward. So we're going to be the floor who's got about a 10-minute presentation on just what the land bank does, and I'll let you take it.
Yeah, and if everybody, anybody didn't get the handout? Everybody's got it? Okay, great. So just for, just for everybody's reference, if you're not familiar, a land bank is simply an entity that takes nonperforming properties or closed properties and unhealthy, unsafe properties, and tries to mitigate them, get them back onto the market in some way or shape or form. That may be by demolition, that may be by rehab. Also, another option is stabilization. Those are really the three main mechanisms. So stabilization may be to get it to the point where the next owner can be found and brought into the process. And a big part of what we do is also dealing with contamination. So a lot of these properties, as you know, probably have asbestos, lead paint, different things like that. So these are things that in the process, we have to follow state-determined testing requirements, including every property, you know, lead and asbestos. So that if and when we sell it, we either mitigate or we report that to the next owner. So a lot of times with, a lot of times with properties that you buy on the market, you don't necessarily know that, that testing alone is about $4,500 per property, just to put that out there. So we joined, the land bank came together in 2016. Brian Thomas and Urban Renewal has been involved from the start. The city was one of the early proponents for it. And we are really excited to be working with the city. The reason for my visit is our IMA, our intermunicipal agreement, is up for renewal. It expired in October, but there had been discussions with the city in the fall with the election and the new members coming on. We wanted to do it in the new year so that everybody would be the new representatives and you had a chance to kind of get your heads wrapped around everything. So just put together a quick summary here. On the second page, you'll see, these are a few of the projects that we've been working on in the city. The first two are demolitions. We helped the city with 613 Columbia, which is right next to the Irish Cultural Center, if you're familiar with that. And did a lot of work with that. What we did there was mainly a lot of salvage. So we reduced significantly, and there's, you know, the data is in the summary, but we significantly reduced the tonnage, brought down the tipping rates, and we're also able to help. The building was full, as you may know. It used to be an auction house. So we were able to donate probably 60% of the stuff in the building so that it didn't just get thrown into the landfill and actually went to Salvation Army and Catholic Charities and other groups that could be reused. The next is 1201 Nielsen, which you may be familiar with. It's behind the old, there's a firehouse in front of it there. That's a teardown. This one is one that was donated to the land bank. The family, I believe somebody had passed away, and so it was, it was something that really needed to be dealt with. It's an eyesore, as you can see. It's really a disaster inside, and so we are, are gonna be taking that down probably in the next month. The last property is 1128 Hammond Avenue, which is a rehab. That's one that we've been working on since about June of last year, and we're hoping to finish that up in the next month or so. We did run into some issues with the electrical, where it was not safe, so we had to essentially backtrack and redo all the electrical in the building. So that set us back a little. But we are working with Cornerstone Baptist on that, Donated Square Project. Everything we do, we try to work with local companies, local contractors. We do a lot with veterans groups, SCORE. We've been also working with MVCC to try and get people into the projects that are from the communities and invest the money, because we have a significant amount of money we're spending. We want to invest it with Utica individuals, you know, and we have a focus on people with challenges to employment, veterans, formerly incarcerated, you know, to help them get back into the community and have pride in the projects that they're doing in their communities. On the front page, I'll just quickly run through and...
I have a good question.
Oh, sure.
So on this, on this Hammond Avenue property, you spent $127,000 on this project thus far. And you're gonna continue in 2029 or, you know, come up?
Yeah, we're probably about 80% done on it.
So you're putting all this money into a house that, I mean, it's an awful lot of money into a house that's not gonna be worth that much.
It's not gonna be worth that much.
Well, all the properties we work on are traditionally, this is a bank foreclosure. It was in and out of foreclosure three times. So one of the things that we're starting out with is underwater properties. And we work with Sony Mae, and they have a program called NRP. But we're focused on rehabbing these and then selling them at market rates. So essentially, there's an affordable component on each one of these houses. And what, the reason the costs are high is because everything we're doing, we're redoing it so it's, you know, meets all the, you know, current codes. It really goes beyond that, so that it's not a house, it's a house that somebody can live in for 50 years and really be a solid home. And with that, the, the program, they will pay market rate. They will not pay, you know, they will not pay for the level of finish in that. And that's addressed through bank settlements that we got from the foreclosure crisis. Some of these banks, like Wells Fargo, acknowledge that they had done things that were inappropriate. So they have essentially funded the delta of when we go beyond that. To do it over again, if we had to with Hammond, we probably would have torn it down and done new construction. There were a lot of kind of lurking issues in it that we came, that came out during the project, like the electrical, which we really couldn't foresee. But it was definitely a blight on that block, and now we're gonna make it into something that's really, you know, something to be proud of.
And you keep the property on the tax roll too.
Yes.
And you sell it, why you keeping that? You keep the property, you sell it, you keep the...
We're limited, we're limited to 15% markup on what we've invested in it, so we try to keep it affordable throughout. Yep. Oh, sure.
So, I feel like, I mean, I'm looking at the kitchen. I mean, is there like a set price you spend on a kitchen? And the reason why I say that is because, you know, you're putting stuff in there before you're putting...
Just remount this kitchen, that's what.
Oh, okay.
I did.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at it, and I'm thinking, wow. You know, is that gonna last, you know, two or three or four years, you know, being used?
No, that's the old kitchen.
Oh, the one, this one here?
Yeah, that's the old kitchen. The right is the new.
We had studs though?
Yeah, well, it's, now it's built out more, but the...
It does look like a nice, that's what I...
It does, but there was a lot of water damage, where the water was coming in. So all the cabinets were thoroughly warped. We couldn't salvage them.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm happy to take anybody over, if anybody wants to go on a tour at any time. Brian can share my contact info. And we vet everything. We have a project selection committee, we call it, which vets all the scopes of work. Brian is co-chair with Mark Domenico from Rome, who you may know, he's a really top-notch code officer. And the two of them work with our project manager to develop the scopes and vet them, you know, through the committee.
So I'm in South Utica, as I said. We've got lots of vacant properties. Not as many as other areas of the city, I know. But, so what's the process by which we get you to take over these houses and fix them up and put them on the market? Because I'll give you a list.
Yeah, very good question. And as I mentioned on here, last year alone, we went through about 30 different properties that we are evaluating. There's a process. We work with Derek Crossman, who works with Brian, who's a really terrific individual. And what we do is we have an intake application. So when we have people in the neighborhoods, we work with Brian's office and Derek, and they complete an intake form. And the key thing that we're looking for is these are bank-owned properties typically. And so then we file a complaint, as mentioned here, with the Department of Financial Services. And then we work with DFS to try and see if we can work with the bank to get them to donate the property. And often, they'll donate it with a concession, you know, so that they can help with those costs. But at the minimum, what we do is we work with codes, we work with Derek to get code enforcement issues addressed. The most recent one, I don't remember, Brian, is it on Broad Street? What was the one that we had, we helped get aborted? We helped get them clean up the landscape? That one that the, the owner had passed away? But a lot of these, the banks won't do the stuff unless you get after them. And so we essentially work in tandem with the city to help bring those to their attention. Now, if it gets to the point where we can, like Hammond was a foreclosure, where there is an opportunity to acquire the building, we do work on that. But we definitely would like to do more projects in the city, for sure.
So, I mean, the vacant properties that we have in South Utica, Derek knows about them. They're on that vacancy registry spreadsheet, if you've shown me.
Yeah, and we've helped them develop that. As I mentioned here, I sit on the Utica Housing Action Committee with Derek, with, you know, the other, the homeownership center, et cetera. So really, what it comes down to is when there's an opportunity where we can help with a property, Brian or Derek will bring us in to do what we can. Yep, absolutely. And I mentioned there, we just, we're just starting off our new grant for the next year. So that's something that, you know, we're, we're working on that Nielsen demo under our new, new round of funding. And again, you know, the visit today, I want to follow up on the IMA renewal. And then also, on the bottom, I put a couple of things that I wanted to discuss. One thing that we've been able to secure in most of the municipalities where we work is a building permit exemption. What happens is, is our focus is to invest every penny that we can into the properties. We are exempt for, for many different fees and, you know, recording, you know, transfer, map change fees, all those things, because we want to be able to put every dime. And the state wanted us to be able to put all those resources into the project. And that's one thing that I would like to ask for. And we've gotten exemption in our other five foreclosing governmental units where we work. So that's something that we would like to...
Just the fee itself?
Just the fee.
Not the application?
Oh, no, we still do the...
You gotta go by guidelines, the electrical, the plumbing?
Yeah, 100%. Everybody's licensed, et cetera.
Where are the other five again?
City of Rome, Herkimer County, Montgomery County, Atsico County, and Scaharry County. Yep, and then with 1128 Hammond in particular, what happened is there was an issue. Since we have this exemption, which, there's only two different entities in New York State that has what's called an instant exemption from property taxes and some other things, there was an issue where we submitted our deed to be recorded, but it sat with the city for a year because there was an issue, the $50 fee wasn't included. So we thought that it had gone through. And then what had happened is the taxes had accrued under the prior owner, which was Castle Rock and Ariok Company. So one of the things that we wanted to discuss is if, as an in-kind donation, the city would consider setting aside the accrued taxes for that property to get that clear. And then the last thing I wanted to discuss is an annual allocation. One of the things that we have asked for this year, we just finished our first three-year period, which we agreed at the outset on founding that we would not come to the city for any money. We generated all our own funds, about $2 million in project funds. And of that, we are on track to spend for our first grant about $250,000 in Utica, in total. But we are asking, now that we are in this new cycle, for a small contribution, and what we've been asking for is just $1,000 to help us with some of the administrative costs. We have a staff of three, including a project manager. And, you know, there's a lot of, you know, overhead that's associated with running the organization.
Well, if we do that, if we give in the fees, would that kind of make up for it?
That would definitely help, but as Brian can tell you, we've been working with our grantor. They really have siloed our funds. So we have project funds, which is where the taxes would come out of, and then we have admin funds. And they really want to see, more than anything, they want to see vesting, that our communities are vested in our success and contributing at least some cash so that they can see that there is support from the local governments.
Is that administrative fees? Are all municipalities that can do that, that you all...
Yes, yep, yep.
So how many total houses have you worked on in all five municipalities?
71.
So how come we only got four?
We are definitely working with the city to try and generate more properties.
Is that something that we're doing or something that you guys are just working? You got all four municipalities that are working this out of it?
Five in total, and no. I think the city is well-supported on the board. Brian sits on our executive committee. But really, the investment here has been a significant amount of time in helping with the zombie properties. That was really, I think, the priority. And I think that we have helped a good deal working with the banks to try and get issues. So while there isn't a direct budget item set aside for that, there has been a lot of progress with those properties.
But it looks like we're the largest city here, and we got the least amount of love?
Oh, no, 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 that's...
I mean, you said three, three out of 75?
Three...
Five.
How many, how many, how many are you, how many are you working on right now?
Well, that includes vacant lots and things like that, where that's even, you know. But we really go by dollar investment. By dollars invested, Utica is the third. But also, part of that is the timeline. So when we finish, as we finish projects, you know, it's, you know, with Hammond, as I said, we had to hold up. So the way it works is when we sell Hammond, then we can take on another. Right now, we're trying to do one rehab per FGU. But with Hammond, we really ran into a lot of timeline issues where it's been, it's behind where it needs to be.
So how many actual houses are you guys working on?
Right now, we're working on five rehabs in the six FGU. So it's one per FGU.
One per.
Yeah, one per.
So what do you do with the vacant lots? I mean, if there's...
We try to find a neighbor, you know, and work with them. And we're also working with HCR for new construction. So we're looking at doing multi-unit buildings, you know, like two families typically.
Can we get a list of vacant treasures?
Right now, it would just be 1201 Nielsen, which is the, the only one. But again, part, yeah, part of this is, is, you know, the work that Brian's doing, we're really a complement to what Urban Renewal does. So they really deal with the bulk of the inventory, whereas in someplace that doesn't have an urban renewal, there's more of a need for us to kind of fill that need. So we're kind of working within his framework.
But I think we could do more with our current foreclosures. You know, I'm taking 40 to 60 properties a year. And why aren't we working with those people? Because some of these people, five or 10 of them, you know, 30 of them are no good. But five or 10 of them just need a little help. Why aren't we helping those people so they can keep their home and it doesn't go? Because these are all bank foreclosures, right?
We do also have money for...
And Brian just said, they're not really, at this point, city foreclosures, although other municipalities are doing city foreclosures.
Well, as I said in the, the second part, we also have a zombie grant ourselves, so we can do foreclosure assistance as well to help keep people out of foreclosure. And we also work with many of the banks, including some of the local credit unions, to help with foreclosure.
I mean, because we have a payment plan, but some of these people just need a little boost to get them over the edge. You know, maybe a refinance or a new boiler or something. And they can keep their home rather than losing their home. And, you know, it kills me when we take people's houses. It's not something we want to do.
Absolutely, and we have helped with half and map. We will sit down, we have a community outreach coordinator that will sit down, work with them for, you know, to do the paperwork. They have small grants where they can help somebody, let's say, the furnace goes, and it could be mean, could mean the difference between paying a mortgage payment and having heat. So we help them with those applications. We also work closely with the homeownership center to help those homeowners...
How do we put $127,000 into a house that's worth 50 and not realize that we're spinning our wheels? I'm confused on that one.
I mean, you know, part of it too is we, you know, we have a board process where, you know, we are driving, we are not, the staff is not driving that process. We're working with the community, you know, community members. This property in particular was one that had been on the news channel for, for years as a problem property. It's right next to the joke with Jerryl.
I mean, I mean, we're taking really good people's houses all the time, they just need a little push. And this is where I think the land bank could do a better job working with our foreclosures.
Maybe what we can do is maybe we can have another meeting to discuss some of the issue more depth. Then we, then we can see what the needs of our city are and how we can meet them. Maybe it's different for our city than other cities.
I think, the idea of a workshop would be great, because...
Yes, but what we, what we do need to discuss, and we are over our time frame.
Sorry.
No, that's, that's a great, great, great questions. But what we do need to do is we need to appoint somebody, because there was a current council member who is no longer going to be on, in that position, and it's Joe Marino, and it is in the finance position. Do you need somebody who has finance background?
Bobby's got heavy finance background.
Is that something that you'd need for your...
That would definitely help. Yeah, Joe was our treasurer, and he had a, no, previously. He was a, he's an accountant, as you probably know, so...
If the council doesn't mind, like, Mr. Bermanster on that position?
Wow, who would they have against?
This legislation also needs the Thursday rule waiver.
Yep, is everyone okay with waiving the Thursday rule?
Is this...
Okay.
Is this the updated IMA now? This was based on the stuff from a couple of years ago, I believe. So has this been updated by the judge so that it's current?
There was a renewal, it was like a three-item renewal?
We got the date correct, March 2020.
When?
Sure the sections haven't changed.
Is this up to date? Is this up to date?
Well, if there's anything that needs to be amended. Judge, can you just look at it quick and just make sure it's, everything's legal with it?
It's the same thing we, it looks like the same thing we approved here.
Yeah, this is the old...
Does this need something?
This is one question I have to ask you is, didn't you mention a contribution?
Yeah, about $1,000.
My, my grant for Renewal gave you that contribution. They sell all these properties.
Sometimes it may be outside of...
They have an account there. Why would Urban Renewal pay? Because they're your legal partner.
Sometimes it might be outside of Urban Renewal District.
Well, we don't know.
It may be, it may not be.
May or may not be, but that's the key difference. The money is not specifically for a property, it's for a district, so it's a difference.
I'll defer to Brian on that.
So looking at this piece of legislation, is this what...
That is the original IMA that we sent over? We sent over, there's a renewal, and there's, essentially, there's three changes. One is the, the apologies.
Do we have a copy of the renewal with you?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Can you email it to our...
Yes, absolutely.
What we'll do is we'll review it, and then at the next meeting...
The judges and clerk have everything from the emails that were already sent, because I sent it all to...
Judge's got to do some test out of it too.
But is there any, there's no reason that you can't wait two weeks for us to pass this legislation in two weeks, right?
Well, it expired October 20th of last year. So we really, you know, we'd like to get it done sooner, but if you don't have it, you know, I don't, you know...
Primarily our audit is incorrect, right? I mean, that's, that's what the renewal would be, right? So we can't even pass if we don't have the name?
Well, no, the only...
Yes, it's this.
The only name you would need is your appointee.
This is the renewal?
Yeah, that's, that's the email that I had.
So you're all set for the renewal? Okay, very good. Okay, we're all set. Okay, Bermanster, is it okay with Mr. Bermanster?
I'm okay with it.
All right, let's go.
Wait, wait, wait.
Here's, here's the thing. If this is not the updated one, he's going to email us the updated one, and we'll review it for the next meeting.
We can always vote for it for the next meeting.
Correct, correct. So if you could email it to...
Absolutely.
I, I don't have...
So we have to wait?
Yeah, I'll give it over to you first.
Some kind of initiative, a three-year...
I don't know.
Yeah, if you want to re-sign a petition.
Sure.
That would be awesome. And we have somebody in nine, so we will just get that to you at the next meeting.
Excellent.
Okay?
Well, thank you very much.
But I also, I would like the idea of, down the road, we might have a longer meeting to be done.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So are you? It's the third use.
He's feeling very sensitive.
Third use.
All right, so we're gonna get started on our regular packet. The first piece is, in my district, it is 3.1, or 318.8-1-52-dot-dash-1, Whitesboro Street. This is a 30-year lease term for the Upper Mohawk Valley Memorial Auditorium Authority paying us $1 for a parking lot. And I've asked for Rob Ash to come in at the next meeting to talk more about it. I spoke with Bill Borrell, as well as Brian Thomas and the mayor. I think it would be imperative for him to be here that whether anybody could ask any questions that they may have. I think, after what I've heard about it, it is a great idea, and I think it's something that would really benefit for the city. I'm glad that I got the information today so that I could say that. And I'm looking forward to him coming here,[1553.92] And I'm looking forward to him coming here and we will talk about that, it won't be coming out tonight.
So we're going to.
This is not even going to.
This is staying in.
So I'd like to refer it to committee.
Refer it to committee.
Thank you.
Who does it?
It's like one and two, right? You got two pieces?
Yeah, there are two of those there.
Yep.
You're going to refer to committee at four?
And so.
Oh, we have.
So we have, guys, all of us.
The next one is a resolution approving intermunicipal agreement with the county for the Dick Miller Basketball League program.
Resolution, I mean, is there?
Do, do we want to do this full council?
Yeah, please.
The next one is a resolution approving intermunicipal agreement with the county for the juvenile aid program. This will be full council as well. The next one will be a resolution approving the intermunicipal agreement with the county for summer recreation safety program, full as well. The next one is Commissioner of Deeds for Alexis Torres. Did you get his two forms of? I have the ID here, I don't have it, but the next page. Yep, so it was approved by Attorney Spadino. Okay, I'm good with it? Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, she got her number, if it's approved by attorney, it can't be down.
The next, the next one is the annual estimate for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Does anybody have any questions about this one?
Nope.
What amount number are we going to?
We have to refer.
You sure?
Just introduce.
This is what the comptroller ends up giving us once we, right?
So the same to committee?
Yeah, this would go to committee.
Do you want to flip around and call for the public hearing first? So we do it with properties, just throw it out there. Doesn't matter as far as.
The next one is the annual estimate, this is a public hearing, this one, you said, call for first?
Yeah, don't forget, guys, everything has to, don't, please remind the table that they require that Thursday rule waived because we got them late. So, you guys understand, which means that we had no, you know, time to get this piece in, but the judge got it done. And we're waiting for the proper amount after we go on the budget, we'll get the proper assessment amount. That we're going to, our, our budget director is going to put the proper amount with excellent control.
So the second one is also going to committee, right?
These are our going, these are going to be.
Yes.
The public hearing is going to pass.
Correct.
Oh.
Public hearing, you got to pass.
Who's pulling that out? You got to pull that out with a backseat.
It would be.
It's going to committee for now until we can.
Right, whatever.
Correct.
So the annual estimate has to be filled in by the comptroller, the Arch A T P said lays on the table. He'll give us the figure after all the amendments come in, if any. He'll figure out what that does to the budget. He'll give you a dollar amount at the end of the meeting, you put it in and you adopt the budget.
Put it into the public hearing.
The public hearing, it's.
Yeah, we have to do the.
Okay?
Correct.
Thank you.
The next one is Councilmember DeBrango, it's the Board of Assessment, Review and Appointment. It is for Barbara Clark.
Chief of Real Estate, lady?
If you find out the dirt.
Okay, don't.
What is this? What is, so this is?
The next one is the.
How many openings do we have?
We have five openings. Can I, can I fill the people in on what happened? So I talked to Chris over in the assessor's office. So our new assessor lowered the amount that we are compensating people from very high to high. And he had two openings and then suddenly he had five openings. So three, the three people who weren't terming out all quit when he lowered their compensation, even though it's still extremely generous. So that's why we now have five openings. So we've got four people here tonight, we're still just looking for somebody to sponsor one more.
I was under the impression.
No, we have, we have five in here.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Dave Williams.
Oh, okay, great, 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 so we have all of us. But that's why there are five openings at once. We were paying people seven fifty a year and now we're paying them five hundred. And other municipalities pay a hundred or pay nothing, so. That's different, that's a.
So we're calling three tonight?
You want?
We're doing, we're doing eight at night. Five, five. We have a five, we have Barbara Clark, so Michelle, Miranda, Nick and you.
We got Kipper.
Yeah, Miranda Kipper, yeah.
There's Michelle Thompson.
Michelle Thompson. She's in Utica, she works for John Brown, realtor. She lives at, you know, she lives in my work. I don't.
Five to no end.
He didn't provide one.
I don't, I don't have an address. Yeah, he is, he is a resident, but he doesn't have my address, he's going to give it to me.
All right, it's no big deal.
Yeah, I'll get it, I'll get it. Yeah, yeah. All of these were people that the assessor.
Right. So there's five openings and there's five people.
So Nick Mancrier doesn't have an address?
No.
And like Dave, like Dave Williams doesn't have his address.
Parker.
Yes.
What are we doing?
Yeah, and Dave Williams still is on there, but I don't have.
Our clerk is saying that they are residents of the city, she just doesn't have their addresses right now. If you don't feel comfortable with appointing them until we have the address, we can also wait until the next meeting.
Someone have a phone number?
I might, I might. Well, David Williams is sixteen years.
Did he go along with the address?
Sixteen years.
David Williams, sixteen years. I can look up on my. I might be able to call Nick Mancrier before the meeting.
If you're not consistent, there's a reason nobody knows the address. I'm trying to get it a year from, you know, so put it in.
So the next one is from Councilmember Friend. It is the appointment for Michelle Thompson. The next one is for the appointment for Miranda Kipper. The next one, we're going to get the address on before we go out on the floor, and that is for.
Nick Mancrie.
Nick Mancrie. The next one is the appointment for Dave Williams. Then we're going into Councilmember Miola, the county council changes and E N A approved annual estimate. It would be, so the rationale for this change is funds for stormwater mitigation throughout the city and it would be taking.
It would be increasing, recently, our check from accounting for sales tax was more than we expected.
So we're putting an extra fifty thousand.
Sales tax revenues and then increase in the expense line, which was zero.
We got a lot going on. I'd like the rest of the council to sponsor this, whoever's, would like to.
I will sponsor it as well.
That fifty thousand will be used if we needed some contract or something.
Yes.
Yes, but it's your money.
Yep. Is it full council?
A full council?
Whoever owns it, okay with that. The next one is from Councilwoman Miola, it is.
Do you want to explain this one? Yes, so, Councilman, you're okay with that? Can you help me explain?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it is a request to increase the mayor's salary to ninety-three thousand five hundred and the comptroller's salary to eighty thousand five hundred. We took a look at what other municipalities were paying for similar populations and similar square footage or mileage. That's how we came upon the numbers. So not to affect the budget, there are a couple of things. Number one, we talked about it in the past couple of budget meetings, it's something actually, Councilwoman DeBrango brought to our attention, there was a typographical error as it related to the deputy chief's salary. It said a hundred and forty-nine thousand, it was really a hundred and forty, there was an error. The comma looked like, on the zero looked like it was a nine. That's, so it was simply a typographical error, so there's nine thousand dollars there. Also, as it relates to two other items, as we were going through the budget presentations, I recognized we had three thousand dollars under purchasing for education. That was in there from the previous year for the previous purchasing agent. The present purchasing agent simply carried that over, just took what the numbers were from the prior budget. There is no anticipation that she is looking for any type of education for purposes of the purchasing department. So that alleviated the need for three thousand dollars there. The third one, a little more complicated, but we budgeted for a provisional cashier. The comptroller's office had an opening and provided for provisional cashier at grade sixteen, which was at a higher pay rate than what he eventually hired. There was a part-time clerk here in the city clerk's office that the comptroller interviewed, felt he, she would fit well in with his office and he offered her the position at a grade twelve, which was a reduction there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller, thank you.
She's great too, Allison's great.
So as it, as it relates to the budget, there would be no increase or decrease to, to the expenditures as outlined in the Board of Estimates approved budget, other than increasing the two salaries of both the mayor and the comptroller.
So, everything stays at one point nine still if this goes on?
Yep, nothing, at of like one point eight nine.
I'm welcome to, all of you, who's a sponsor, also with this.
Okay, so let me ask this question, what did we talk, what did we say the other day at, at the meeting? Now, you had us that piece of paper, we had the mayor of Rome makes what amount? I don't, I didn't.
Ninety-one, ninety-one.
Makes ninety-one.
Did we get the, I wasn't, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meeting today. Did we get the paperwork that was showing what?
Your staff.
The actual staff made, and we had asked for that?
Yep, I forgot to do it.
And the mayor's skin equity was what?
Hundred, the act, then he was one hundred five.
One hundred five sixty-eight.
And we're.
Councilmen will have that out tomorrow.
We are both bigger than, than both of those cities, correct?
Correct.
No, it's connected to be as large as we are.
Is larger, but that's, he's quite a bit higher too.
How much in each department, so there's something that.
And basically, this has to be reaffirmed by E N A also.
So can it, can we ta, can we table this until we talk about this?
It's going to committee.
Oh, it's going to committee, this is not being voted on tonight, correct?
No, yes.
Okay.
Whoever wants to sponsor, we're all.
Yeah, I don't, I just want to go over a few more things.
Absolutely.
Before we, because I wasn't prepared, I mean, I know we talked about it the other night, but I didn't know that we were coming actually with a dollar amount, so, okay.
We refer to committee.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm also asking how, who'll sponsor as well, so.
Yeah, I, I do have a question. I think, I see that the mayor's, that's justified, I mean, on the top.
Yep, I know what you're going to say, it's because, as it relates to the comptroller.
The comptroller's not.
It doesn't jive because the, the, because we're reducing.
It's the whole salary to the department.
Grade sixteen and now it's going to twelve, that's why it's not really clear, but, but the numbers do jive up.
The department's.
Money will come out of the grades.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, so some of it's coming out of him, but already a bad cost allocation, another portion of it's coming out of purchasing.
Not him personally.
No, I mean his cost allocation.
The office, the office.
The office of the comptroller, yes.
We can't, we can't subject salaries, we can only do departments.
I had a choice of either doing it that way or taking it from the comptroller and adding it back to the comptroller.
Which is crazy.
And I just, I thought both ways were confusing.
Okay.
So, yeah, one other question, so when this, if this salary increase goes through, correct? If it goes through, so now, what happens year two, three and four, it doesn't go through, that's it? Or you just give it a call? That's it?
That's it.
No more after that?
The only people who can increase, the mayor or the comptroller's pay.
Yes.
Is the Councilperson.
So technically, next year, it could come back to us and we could say we want to raise the mayor again?
If the mayor asks, the comptroller asks, but I, listen, they haven't asked, how many years you got over there? Four, eight?
Listen, I'm just, I'm just asking.
They're correct. You can also.
But it's, but it's raised that about for the next four years.
Yes, yeah, but he's not getting another increase on, on top of that.
No, you get to make that decision.
Yeah, we make that decision, correct, okay.
You get your hold on.
So, yeah, of course, which is fine.
All right.
So we're putting both of those to committee. This one is, the whereas is changed on it, so it is an updated one, so please take out the local law, the next piece of legislation and replace it with the one that's going around. You can do your own, you can. Replace this one? Do you want to replace this one? Yeah, it's going right around, so just throw the other one right in the center.
The local, the local law.
So whereas on it is changed to better reflect.
Yeah, because it's a charter amendment, it has to, it has, we have to have a local law.
I don't want to remind you.
Judge, because it's a charter amendment, it requires a local law. Yeah.
All right, so this one is a local law amending subdivisions. A and B of Utica City Charter Section two dot zero two four. It is reflecting what we were just talking about for the city comptroller, saying that they will now be receiving eighty thousand five hundred a year and the mayor of the city of Utica's salary will now be ninety-three thousand five hundred.
And we don't have to do those for people that are scheduled in that charter.
Correct. So this is also going to committees, this is the first one, so. Correct. Correct. Okay, anybody have any questions? Tonight, I'd like to. Yeah, I was going to say, tonight, I'd like to.
There's two pieces out of committee.
I'd like to take out the.
Two days, two days, two days.
Yeah. There's a lot of papers here, bear with me a second. The, to build and encroach upon the city right of way on Lafayette Street, we, we tabled this at the last meeting, I'd like to take that back out tonight.
Comment around now.
Yeah, that one.
So Maria, you're all set with that piece of legislation?
I'm all set with that piece of legislation. If anybody has any more questions, feel free to. Anything else, anybody else wants to bring out this evening?
Yeah, I can bring, bring something up.
I need a copy of whatever you got.
Yep, it's thrown around right now.
I can bring it out, the bail reform. Now, I'm not asking you, I'm not asking, what's the change on the bail reform? We know that the governors look into, to make some changes on it. I'm not looking to end the, the new bail reform, I'm just asking them to take a look at it and make some amendments where needed. So I'm going to pass this around, I put some amendments on here that I'm going to bring to the floor because it's dated now, so I'm going to be, so the date's got to be fixed on it and some wording has to be fixed on it, but I'm going to be calling for that and I'm going to be requesting these amendments on it, we can pass that around.
So you're going to read this and then amend it on the floor?
Yeah.
Or are you reintroducing it now?
Well, I'm not sure how we could do that, what's the best way to do it?
It's a resolution.
Right, it's just a resolution.
You can make the amendments here and then I have to read them into the record on the floor.
Just introduce it.
All right, well, okay, what I'll do is I'll do the amendments, I'll make sure it gets passed around.
You know, you should just a moment explain it to them.
Right.
You know more about this than all of us.
Right. So what I'm, initially, I was asked to, on this, to take a look at it and we, we knew that this, this law going in really, it was well intentioned, but it was poorly, poorly legislated. Myself, if you look through this, you'll see that even the mayor himself, excuse me, the governor himself, has actually said that it needs some changes on it. So we're just asking them to change it. But, but the wording on it, once again, because I, you can see that it was dated, we had some changes. So urging the state of the, of New York to immediately, and I took out, amend, I took out the delay of the implementation of bail and discovery reform laws that we have endangered the people of the, of the state of New York and reversed decades of bipartisan progress in reducing crime, all right? And then if you go to the third line, put the second whereas, I just, there was an M in there, I put the comma in there. I don't know why that, it was just a misprint. What do you want, you need one?
No, the computer.
You have any?
I'm taking a poll on the senator's home.
Oh.
Can you send me one too?
I made nine of them, there should be, I had nine put together.
How do you want to change the word endangered to endangered? Is that what you want to do there?
Oh, no, have endangered.
Correct the English, you might have correct the English.
Okay, okay, so we got to put an endangered, should that be E D there?
That have endangered.
Okay, the people of, of New York. Okay, and then.
If anybody catches any other type of graphical errors.
All right, and then.
That graphical always can be.
Right, and then go down to the one, two, three, four, five, the sixth whereas. Whereas, under the bail reform beginning January first, twenty twenty, judges were no longer, I get, will no longer, I got, were no longer.
Actually, you have where no longer.
You have where.
Oh, excuse me, excuse my writing. Hey, listen, I'm sorry. Were no longer, thank you for catching that, permitted, get rid of the B. And then, I mean. And then, I'm removing one totally on there. If you go down on the second page, you'll see where I got it crossed out there, taking that one out. And then, on the, right underneath that one, it's instead of, it requires the police in district, I'm thinking will require, it just requires there. And then, and on the bottom of the page, hopefully I spelled immediately twice there correctly. And that's it, not long.
Can you all tell me how many of these happen in Utica or Alana County?
Say, yeah.
Can you tell me how many of these crimes happen in Utica or Alana County?
I could have the, the judge, I could have the police department get up there and.
Do you have any ideas?
All the crimes.
All the crimes included in this legislation.
Would you like to?
You have thirty seconds.
Officer Kelly, does anybody know, know Officer Kelly?
Yeah, Officer Kelly, Capman.
Resident assault of child in daycare and, and female genital mutilation, endangering the welfare of vulnerable elderly persons, we see some of that aspect. And, 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 why does that language have to be included in the resolution?
Because I wanted the people to understand that these are some of the things that, within the state, who say, it might not happen today, but who says it's not going to happen tomorrow?
So the governor's proposal is just to, not all of these aspects, the governor's proposal is to mainly based upon giving judges discretion.
And what, and that's, and that's all, and I'm asking, I'm not asking them to change any, I'm just letting them know where some of the issues are that I have and other, and the law enforcement agencies who have sat with me on this and said, these are some of the issues we have.
We couldn't do that as a letter.
I think I'd like to do it as a resolution, this is, I'm voting for it, you don't have to vote, I don't have no problem.
I understand that, I was just asking questions.
This is the council's way that we normally do.
I understand, we just did, I voted for one, helped you sponsor the one for Medicaid.
And I appreciate that.
You know, so I understand the resolution, I understand this is how we talk. Of course, I'm not voting for it and I've talked to state leadership in the Democratic Party that called me personally. Doesn't look good as a Democrat for me to be voting for this.
But I think it looks good as a citizen of the New York State to take care of our citizens here and, and to look at the, the public state, the end of it. Are we, are we going to try to take care of the, the people breaking the law, are we just trying to take care of the citizens that we're trying to protect? You know, the, the majority of the crime that goes on in the city of Utica is in the inner cities. So for someone who represents the inner cities, to try to take away some of the, some of the tools that the judges and the, and the, and the police have, specifically in the findings, they only have fifteen days to include the city, to include the police department as well as the DA to actually get, to actually put these cases together, I think it's absolutely ridiculous. I think if I was an inner city person, I would want more laws to protect my people because that's where the majority of the crime is in this city.
And you don't, and you don't know.
And I'm a parole officer, and I'm a parole officer in the city of Utica and I've been doing this for close to thirty years and I do work with the people in Corning Hill on a daily basis over these thirty years. And I, I think that it's my responsibility as a councilman and as a former parole officer to do all I can to protect these people. I don't care about the people that are.
So let me, let me just.
Hold on, wait one second, hold on, wait one second.
I'm sorry, I have the floor.
I understand that.
This is my meeting, so if you'd like to speak.
But he addressed me.
I, I understand that, but this. I, I understand that, but this, so.
And, and, please let them know.
Actually, why don't you address the chair?
It's, it's just one of, it's one of really, it's one of those things, that way there are people aren't talking over each other, they can feel people in the audience getting, getting a little heated about it, because I'd like a little more order if needed.
No, but you, but you, I'm bringing, but you, but you understand that I know firsthand that how these discovery laws impact my opinion.
Well, the, what.
So, so the point I'm making is for, to, to characterize.
I will not bring up any case.
To characterize that my critique is not founded in person, like, I know what the, what the state law, right? I understand the discovery.
Exactly.
And, and, and I'm not in the assembly, and I didn't write that law on that bill, right?
And you're entitled to your.
I get all that, but I'm.
Please, please, he's respectful of everything that he says.
Right, because my community.
Our community.
Our community.
Our community.
Sure.
I'm a councilman at large.
I understand that, Jack, I'm not making it personal about you, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, the community and the people that voted for me as Corning Hill, when we, when we look at this, right, the message that we send, right, is twofold. And so the reason why I said it could be a letter, because when it goes to the, to the, to the assembly and to the senate, it says that the whole council.
No, it's, if you agree with it, you put your name on it. If you don't agree with it, your name won't be on it.
My name, I explained about some of it.
He signed it.
And, and, listen, you have every right to, when we get out on the floor, you can vote your, 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 how you feel about it, and we'll go from there. But I know how I stand, everybody has their opinion, though.
Absolutely.
And the people that agree with me will vote on it, if it gets passed, and the people that don't, we'll, we'll stay there. And I'll respect anybody's opinion, how they, and I truly respect your opinion on this.
Any more discussion on it? Anything else that anybody wants to bring out tonight?
Two dash two dash two seven. If the majority leader doesn't mind. This was sitting in committee because of procedures, and I'd like the council to vote on it. Judge is the one who crafted it, so we can come in compliance with a new bylaws, I mean, move the board. And that's it. This is the majority leader. Set the tab.
Oh, I didn't have.
Anybody has a?
This was at the second or third council.
This is what we passed for that, I mean, the hall?
Yeah.
Correct.
What is it actually we're doing?
This legislative support the committee of the vote. It needs to be passed.
Are you putting this committee or are you passing?
We're already within committee, I need the votes to.
So it's trying to be voted on?
Yeah.
So you're gonna call it out?
Yes.
I.
Yes?
If you don't mind. If you'd like to continue as a council, with current rules of order that you've been enacted, you're welcome to do so, because you are the majority that enacted those rules. What this will do is make it so no future council or council president can establish said committees. Every two years, the council does enact their own rules of order, as you have for this ensuing two years, which did modify the committee process, did modify how legislation is introduced, reviewed, et cetera. It's unnecessary to pass this to continue with your new rules. You don't have to. At this point, if you want to continue with those new rules, I have challenged the majority trying to change those rules at this point, because it's your decision. And if you don't pass this, I'm still going to drive the council in accordance with your new rules regardless. But this does effectively remove all future capability of not just the council president, but the council as a whole, because it was written originally that the majority of the council can also be in control of its own committees.
And this reflects the same thing.
Well, it reflects it, but permanently changes it.
Of course, that's what, that's what ordinance do, they permanently change.
Correct, but all I'm stating is, you can continue operating this council as you've enacted under these rules without changing this. This does not have to be done.
Council members.
Is that correct?
Yes, may I?
No, the judge says it's mandated.
So, please clarify one thing for me, so, in two years, when a new council comes.
They can change the rules as they want.
They can, so, they can vote again to say, we want to operate in a committee.
They can do anything they want.
So.
They can change the rules of order anytime they want.
What is president, it's trying, he's saying it permanently changes it.
No, anything, just like this was prior, okay, which reflects the committee structure of only four members, now it reflects the committee structure of the whole council, that's all.
Okay, so in six months, in six months, like we talked about.
You can change everything.
If the committee in the hall is not working.
You can change everything.
I could propose something to say, let's go back to the committee system, we can vote on it, if we get by, we can.
Do you like it so far?
I, I, I don't, like I told you, I never worked the other system, so I, you know what I mean?
So this might clarify it, what, what is the purpose of this?
Yes.
Purpose of this is to conform, to conform what you've already done. Right. You, you passed the rules of order, which actually supersede anything else concerning the administration of the rules of the council. You already did that. You effectively thought that, you effectively appointed the chairman, but you effectively appointed the chairmans he gave you anyway. That's right. So you added two more, and you appointed the chairman of those. And this says that the, that the common council selects the committee system. It selects how it's gonna be made up, but the chairmans will still remain appointed by the president of the common council. Correct. And when they, when they give that, gave that authority to the president of the common council in eighty-six, that common council that Mr. Beatrice pointed out, they didn't make it effective for them. They made it effective for the next council, and they did it by a six-three vote, because they argued about it for seven months, and then they passed in July. And then, but they said they weren't gonna have it for themselves. They kept the structure you had, and so. You did a lot of research. All I'm saying, the only reason that was put in is to conform with what you did and your rules. And does not, it has no permanent effect, because the council has complete control of the rules, and that statute says by ordinance, you can do whatever you want. And if somebody wants to change it, change the rules, the next council will make it, who knows? A lot of people, you know, decide where they're gonna run next time.
Council president has.
Just one more thing, I mean, even with this sitting the way it is now, after you've changed these rules, I did not then again attempt to somehow go back and forth with the majority, because I recognized that the will of the majority was the new rules. And under the current two, 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 seven, the council had the ability to modify the committees.
Yeah.
Only numbers.
So it's unnecessary?
Only numbers. Couldn't name the committees, and they couldn't, and only did, could adjust the numbers. It had nothing to do with who was gonna be on the committee, and what the titles.
Yes, it did.
That was your, they've changed that.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Meeting adjourned?
Oh, perfect timing.
This meeting will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
McNeil, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Moody, Beatrice, Williamson, Lamedico, DeBrego, Gleamy, all present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the number. Before we begin, Madam Clerk, would you like to introduce the deputy clerk?
Yep, sorry. Excuse me, our new deputy clerk is David Butler.
All right. Thank you. First order of business this evening is public hearing, we have no properties, the public hearing is now closed. We would have a Florida, a motion from the floor to waive the current rules to have a presentation from the Davy. Okay, we have a motion from Miola, second from Williamson, any opposed? All right, the order of business has been modified. I'd like to introduce Lori Brockelbank from the Davy Resource Group to come forward. We have a guest this evening to present the findings of our tree inventory and our urban forestry management plan. Thank you. You have the floor.
All right, thank you. Thank you for having me. So, in December, we had a crew out working on the streets of Utica. We, what we were doing is looking at all the trees, the stumps, and potential planting sites in some of the areas. And I'll go in more detail as we go through this, but we really spent the time to inventory all these. Showing on your screen right now is all the sites we inventoried, over ten thousand. Of that, what we found was there are ten thousand seven hundred eighty trees, this does not include the parks. This really only includes the street trees. Of that, one hundred and thirty-four stumps, and the potential of two thousand vacant sites. This is not representative of all the vacant sites in the city, but it representative of a certain area. Of those, really, the main thing that you have available are small planting sites. What that means is that these are small trees that you can put in, not necessarily the big growing oaks and maples that you normally see, but a lot of the smaller ones, your crab apples. This is almost like a call to action for the municipality to see this and say, if we want the best trees, the biggest trees, the biggest benefits, we kinda gotta change what our planting sites look like, and get them bigger. So where we collected those vacant sites are all in the yellow up there. So more in the main primary downtown areas. Here's the alarming thing. You all remember Dutch elm disease? Remember how all the ash trees were all doomed all of a sudden a few years back? Well, there are certain insects that go after certain species. Here in Utica, you have a majority of Norway maple, forty-three percent. There are a few insects out there that do love Norway maples. We have Asian longhorn beetle, we have spotted lanternfly that like Norway maples. Imagine if you lost almost fifty percent of your population at once. Here's where it gets a little bit scarier, for all your maples, almost sixty percent. Is this unusual? Not necessarily in New York State, but it is a call for action. Basically, what we're recommending in the management plan is stop planting maples. One more. Start getting that variety out there. Does this fall just on the municipality? No. This falls on the private citizens as well. So even as you're thinking about what to put in your own backyards, stop thinking what is overall in the city, what is for the benefit of the city. So really, kinda slow down on the maple plantings. The key word we always hear when we talk about trees lately is it native. Well, one thing that we found out here in Utica is, well, twenty-six percent of them are native. That leaves a large majority are not. Is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? It's up to opinion. Personally, our climates are changing. We can't have a hundred percent New York native trees all the time, because there's a, it's a potential that they might not survive in fifty years, sixty years, hundred years, it's gonna change. But to have that mix is ideal, so starting to think about where are we getting our trees. Overall, the trees were found in fair condition. Not good, but just fair, but that's better than having a whole bunch in the poor or the dead. Really, only seventy-two trees out of that ten thousand were found dead. That's really good, to give you in retrospect. We also looked at overhead utilities. Are they in conflict? Are they present? The main reason why we look at this is not to call out anybody, or to say, hey, we have a problem here. It's more to say, hey, you know what, we can put in there now, if we do have a conflict, when that tree declines, we could put in a new small tree. Now we don't have that conflict. It's not the utility company's fault for doing those bad prune jobs, what we perceive as bad prune jobs. It's not their fault, it's our fault as planters and planners. We need to put the right tree in the right spot. But we also looked at hardscape. So where the sidewalks were lifted up or cracked, we took note of that. So twenty-two percent of the sidewalks, or some type of hardscape was present. Of that now, we looked at the size distribution. The yellow lineup there represents the ideal. What you wanna look at is really where you have the larger trees, they're not in the majority of the population. Why is that? Budgets. Big trees cost a lot more money to take down, to prune, to care for. So we try to help you get an equilibrium, a budget line going, so that you don't have these influxes all of a sudden in the future, where you have to take care of those larger trees. So really, even as you're looking at planting, is where is that tree gonna be eighty years from now, seventy years, maybe even thirty years? Is it gonna get into that larger? How is it gonna affect our budget? And looking at that. We looked at tree age and the condition as well. Surprisingly, you know what? A lot of the younger trees, they're gonna be in good condition. They haven't really developed. We'd like to see as we go down in more of those larger sizes, more that orange color. We want more trees being good. So even as work is being done, though, these numbers can change, they can fluctuate. So as you're pruning, as you're correcting, things can improve. This is just a snapshot in time, that's the one thing we wanna get across, is what it looked like in December. Looking at removals. This is a little bit different than what I've normally seen throughout the state. Lot of the removals are more in that mid-class, thirteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-four. This is good for a budget, because they're not the big monsters that need to come out, they cost a little bit less. Still gonna cost some money, but not as bad. But keep in mind, how big does a Norway maple get? Twenty-some inches, then it goes. This is really reflecting of what we saw for the species. Looking at tree pruning, a lot of the bigger trees need pruning. And then we look at different cycles, so really, we're looking at, you know, there's a lot of trees, a lot of times, we have to get that pruning cycle. So what we would recommend is doing by block prunes, so taking whole neighborhoods at a time, going through, cleaning them up, and getting a cycle where those trees are visited every seven to eight years ideally. That's ideally. Observations we also recorded, I mean, four thousand trees have dead or dying parts. It means a pruning cycle is really recommended. But, on the high note, almost four thousand of them also, half of them had nothing wrong with them. Which shows there is a proactive out there. Here's one of the things that we look at, though, mainly, invasive species. I mean, we all heard about Dutch elm, we all know about Emerald Ashbore, how many people have heard about spotted lanternfly? Show of hands, anybody heard about spotted lanternfly? Oh, boy. You have good, because this is a serious threat to New York State, to all of us. This insect really goes after our adult beverages. It goes after wines, so the grapes, it goes after our hops, but it also likes maple trees. It likes trees in high sap. What is alarming about this, it's not necessarily the insect and how it sucks out the juices of the plant that kills it, it also secretes a sugar substance, which then attracts sooty mold, and this black mold is all over your furniture, all over the plant. That's the worst part of it. But right now, fifty-nine percent is susceptible to this. How close is it? Well, New York State, we have found some dead adults not too far away. We have found them in, what is it, down by Binghamton area, Ougio, Staten Island, but down on Philadelphia area. It is down there, it has killed off entire orchards. This is a serious threat. DEC and AFIS are being very proactive in New York State, which is good. They do surveys. But when we keep talking about trees, trees aren't just pretty sticks in the ground. Main job is, they have a lot of eco-services for us. One of the things is, these trees in Utica are holding one point six thousand gallons. Thousands, I mean, this is thousands of gallons these trees are doing for us. Every year, the trees here give us fifty-six thousand dollars in benefits. Stormwater, clean in the air, carbon storage. Structure value, if we had to go out and remove and replace all these trees, close to twenty-two million, twenty-one point six million dollars. It's what those trees out there are worth. Surprisingly, you would think, though, hey, we have so many Norway maples, those give us the biggest bang for our buck. Not really. They do ensure a number, yes, but if we looked at per tree, what gives us the best benefit? looked at per tree, what gives us the best benefit? London plains, American sycamores. Each, they have two trees inventoried, but those values of those trees, almost 9,500. So by changing our tree species composition, we can change that number of what the eco services come back. So something to think about, something to reflect back to this graph, which is found in the management plan and say, okay, what is giving us really great? I mean, look at northern red oaks. 136 of them, there's $6,000 per tree. It's a lot. I mean, trees really are the one infrastructure for a municipality that gives back more. It doesn't depreciate. It actually appreciates. In Utica, there are some gold medal trees. This is something that if you logged onto the Utica Treekeeper site, is that you can see these gold medals. If there's some in your neighborhood, please go out and give them a big hug. These are the guys and gals trees that are out there, and yes, trees have, they are, have sexes, that are giving you your eco benefits of best. They are the champions out there. You do have quite a few of them. Just zeroed in on one of the neighborhoods around the St. Elizabeth area down by the hospital. Give you an idea for trees. Also, if you're sitting in a hospital room and you look out at trees, they have found you need less pain medicine, that you heal quicker. Let me think about it. Down in that area, there are a few gold medals that everybody can be looking out at. So, Utica does get the Treekeeper. This is a Davie Resource Group tree program. As citizens, you can look on it. You can just click on a tree, see what kind it is, and how, what is the value of it in eco services. So you can look at your own trees. One of the things that we really introduced this week as a company is given an assessment. This is a measurement, and this is where I come to you, the council. I put you on task really to kind of look at this and say, where are we today for our urban forests? As you can see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 out of 8, you're rating poor right now. It means there's room for improvement. It's not, nothing bad. It's just, hey, you got room to grow. This is amazing. Really, the condition being fair, give it a fair rating. Grow in site suitability, really look at what's available out there. A lot of them are yard trees, yard areas. That's good. Environmental, social benefits, gave quite a bit. Those are good. But can we do better on species selection? Yes. Can we do better on our size class? Yes. We can do better on our stocking level, too. One thing, too, that we'd ask for you, this is something for you to do, is to kind of look at your program. And this is something I've talked to Chris earlier, and this is something with the tree board. One of the things of why we did this program, too, was in the management plan, give recommendations, how to become a Tree City USA. And one of those things is you have to form a tree board. Every tree board needs a mission. So going through this kind of a list to say, how are we measuring up? Can we focus on this? Can we focus on community engagement? Can we focus on really sharing what these trees give back? This is something for you to go through and decide, for you to go through. And then come back. If you need help with it, I love chicken riggies. I will come back and visit anytime, anytime. And Utica greens, I love them. So what are your next steps? Diversify your species. Really, let's stop planting Norway maples. By the way, Norway maples are invasive species in New York State. Stop planting them. Prioritize managing. Looking at our risk ratings. Get rid of the high risk, the extreme risk. Start working on that. Prune the young trees. Pruning young trees can mean a matter also of citizen engagement. Having people out there helping you. Keeping the Treekeeper up to date. We are holding a session tomorrow for some of the municipal members to learn how to use it. So it does not stay stagnant. Relooking at the, the trees, I have recommendations at our borderline. So going out there and visiting the trees often. And also, just updating the inventory as you go along. Those are the main things. So, after that long waitiness, anybody have any questions? Big hands.
So, I'm sure you found some blocks with no trees on the muscle up there, and I see them all the time. And if we planted trees in our area that you're kind of responsible for, would that help with the mitigation of, like you said, water? Also, how about the streets? The more the streets are shaded?
The more the trees are shaded, yep. The more the trees are shaded, the less the asphalt breaks down.
Breaks down, and protects it from the ice and the snow and everything else. So, you know, we only got so much funding to put trees in. Is there grants out there in the state of New York that can actually boost up our tree inventory, just, you know, be on the apple seat for the first couple of years and get them going? I mean, did you already recommend what trees you need to put on certain blocks?
Not on certain blocks. We don't do specifically by blocks. But we just, I mean, we were limited by the funding source. This entire inventory was paid for by New York State DEC for the grant program. So they limited to us to where we could collect. So that's why you don't see vacant sites all over. So if your neighborhood, your area is not represented, that's why.
So if you put a three-inch caliper on someone's lawn in an area where it's, you know, there's no trees, and that three-inch caliber tree sucks how much water, you think?
Depends on the species. Every species is different. If you put a London plain in there, obviously, it's going to do a whole lot more.
A London plain?
Mm-hmm. Think of it as a camouflage. You know, the bark that looks like camouflage, it different colors, and it flakes off by waterways usually. That's a London plain.
But not, uh, we've been well, not?
Willows have a bad rap. I call willows and silver maples the redheads of the tree family. We shed like crazy. It's one of the ways to tell a true redhead. We shed, hair sheds, oh my gosh. Crazy. So yes. So those trees, we really don't.
So to catch up for our plan, how many trees we got, how many trees we need to plant every year?
I want to say, what was it like? It was in the plan of?
300?
300, yeah.
Over 300 trees a year?
300 trees a year. That's just counting for what we inventoried. That does not count for everything else.
And then 3, and an average tree is about $100. Two-inch, three-inch caliper?
Well, depends. We go root ball or bean bean?
But- That's to purchase a tree. Typically, the question is, how much does it cost per tree is, so many, if you contract it out and you're paying for the contractor, the guarantee, blah, blah, blah. $4.50 is $700.
Per tree?
Per tree.
But the right kind of tree?
Right, right.
Gives us the most bang for the buck?
Yes.
What should be that? London fog?
London plains, hackberries.
Oh, London.
I mean, there's such a wide variety that you could go off of, you know, for benefits. I mean, really, if you went back to the one graph here, you know, the American sycamore, the black oats, red oak, basswood, swamp white. Swamp whites are a great tree. They grow fast, and they have a beautiful texture to them, too. So wide variety.
So, paving and water mitigation probably?
Air pollution.
And aesthetics of the neighborhood?
Yes, think about it this way. A tree in a yard typically increases the property value by 10 percent. People are more likely to buy a house that has nice landscaping. Kind of solves that vacant property problem, in some ways.
So if you plant a tree and the person doesn't care for it in their yard because it's kind of an arsement, they can, you know, sometimes they disappear.
They do. The thing is, is the community involvement, community buy-in. That's huge for a successful program. If you don't have that, you will have a problem.
We could plant about 100 trees with the budget we gave you.
Just about.
To answer your question, your other question, too, though, is there other grant programs? Yes. New York State DEC does have a planting grant. They do have a maintenance grant as well, with only 25 percent match, roughly. So you can get a lot of that taken care of. Now, having this plan, this is your first step, because the DEC will not give you those funds unless you have a plan in place. Now you do. There's also money through Arbor Day. They do another grant. There's other federal grants that are available. So yes.
How about, how about taking trees out of park? I mean, we got lots of smaller trees in Park Park. Taking those out and transplanting them?
That's difficult.
It's difficult.
It's difficult. I have, I've not seen a huge success rate.
Because we have a beautiful park.
Right. We'll keep the trees in the park and keep it beautiful.
Add more.
Add more, you know, yeah, to get more out.
I had to get up close because I can't see far away.
Sorry. Yet another question.
Yeah, thank you. One of the issues that we have, I know that the Corn Hill area is, is really hurting for trees right now. And there's not a lot of space between the sidewalk and the road. And the trees that we would like planted in those areas, they're going to, they're going to have issues with a lot of salt coming off the streets and everything, and, you know, from the plow and everything. What's a good tree that is indigenous to, to the Utica area that would be good for those areas? That would be salt, you know, that can handle the salt.
The first one that comes to my mind is hackberry. H-A-C-K berry, B-E-R-R-Y. I have seen that one. I work a lot more in the Western New York, so right against the Peace Bridge area, right against, you know, the lake. Ton, I mean, we get snow like you guys do. Lot of salt gets used in the city. Those trees on those streets that have been planted are doing phenomenal. Really, really good. There's a bunch of other ones. There's some, you know, varieties of some, some crab apples, some. The swamp white oak, seen great results with that tree as well.
And would they be, would they keep a size where they would not pick up the sidewalks and, and damage the curb areas?
Those are like a medium-sized tree. Small tree, maybe a hawthorn. Lilacs have been doing really good. There's a, you know, different-
They would handle the salt from the streets.
They do handle the salt, yeah. Yeah, the thing is, though, keep in mind is, even as you're putting in new sidewalks, is really looking at the construction of those sidewalks. Look at the soil that you're putting in underneath it. What are you putting in? Is it gravel? Is, you know, give the roots room to grow, too. There's different material, different landscaping you can do to be proactive, to encourage the roots to go where they need to go, and not do the damage.
All right. Well, one last question. As you know, we have beautiful parks here in the city of Utica. And some areas are, the trees are, the trees are thick. Is there a, a plan, or do you suggest actually, you know, maybe trimming or cutting some of them trees down to give new growth to come in, or you just like to go with, just let them grow as high as they can and let it rip?
I know Utica, and I know some of those parks that I've hiked in them, but, you know, visited them. I was fortunate, well, I don't know if fortunate's the word. My ex-husband is from this area. He's actually from Ilium. So I used to visit here quite often for 20 years, just about. But we, I mean, they're beautiful parks. I mean, amazing. But as a DRG person, we were not asked to visit those areas.
Okay.
There's actually another grant out for another organization to come through and help. We're hoping to be able to help them, though, with that inventory. So that information goes into this software program, so the city has one go-to place to understand. So some of that information of species diversity might change, you know, based off the parks.
Yeah, I would think, you got areas that are really thick with trees. Maybe you cut some down to have new growth grow in. And that, that would be some, that's something that you would, that would be healthy for those, for those areas.
It is. I mean, my background, actually, I am a forester by trade, similar of your, your woods forester. And the way to look at a woodlot, it's like growing a tomato in your garden. I mean, do you just let it go and let it rot and that's it?
Is that because you have red hair? Is that why you're saying that?
Yeah, that's it. There are golden tomatoes, too.
Don't worry, I heard all the redheaded jokes.
Oh, come on. I grew up with them. I'm used to redheaded jokes. But you, you do want to thin them out occasionally. You want sustainable forestry. That's the key, is really having it be sustainable. So you do have that different undergrowth. So you are promoting different wildlife in there, different species coming up. I mean, really, a lot of the animals do like that kind of thing. They like that, different layers.
I'd like to thank you for coming up today and speaking with us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I got, I got another question, one more. We used to be the city of Elms, and I planted, I planted some hybrid elms thus far, and some did take and some don't take. Do you recommend going back to the hybrid elms?
Some take, some don't take. Like you said, I mean, Zelkova's is a type of elm. It's more of a Chinese-style elm. It's more of that vase style. They do very well in municipals. They do get to a point where they kind of reach their point, but probably beyond our life at this point. But Zelkova's are a nice other elm. Keep in mind, especially in your parks, the American chestnuts coming back. I think we got, what, two more years? And that's going to be a public tree again? So maybe go into that route. But to see that typical big elm tree, it's just not happening. I have not seen one really grow to the majestic of the older ones. So, it depends on your soil type, too.
Could, could you send that to all the council?
Kenny, Chris, you guys?
I'm talking to a clerk.
It's action.
All right. Thank you.
And then the one site there is, you know, there is a public site for that Treekeeper, too. So you can kind of look at that, too.
Is that on my, is it on my laptop at this point?
It's on your laptop?
No, it's not yet. It hasn't been made public yet.
No, is the, the PowerPoint's on his?
The PowerPoint's on. Say yes.
And is that fine to give to the clerk?
Yes.
Then that's what we'll do. Yes, you'll have the presentation tomorrow. Thank you. You have anything else?
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next order of business this evening is public common period. We have 13 people signed up to speak this evening. The time will be divided equally, 2 minutes and 18 seconds per line. The first group, or the first, oh, this is a group. Let's see. Divide this up differently. How many dual people do we have? Just one? Okay, that's fine. Bill True and Lucretia Hunt, if you could please come forward. Thank you.
Ready, sir?
Hang on just one second here. Have to follow these new rules and do the math. 12. Okay. The Common Council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Common Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
I am, sir.
All right. Between the two of you, please state your name. When you do begin speaking, you'll have four minutes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Bill True, and this is Mrs. Lucretia Hunt, that's joining me tonight. Members of the Utica Common Council, members of the Police Department, Fr. Chief Enerso, and all those in attendance, and of course, our families and friends at home. For our city, to get the best qualified police officer candidates to protect and serve the city of Utica, we need to start thinking outside the box. If a member of our community is a victim of a crime or crisis and needs the assistance of our police department, and that person places a call for service to the UPD, that victim is not going to ask the responding officer whether or not he or she lives in the city of Utica. But rather, they're going to be more concerned about the response time and the service provided by that officer arriving on the scene. There are several public safety departments across the state of New York who don't even have a residency requirement. Why is that? Because they want the best qualified, best trained individuals protecting and serving all members of the community in their time of need. Being a community advocate for the city of Utica, we are asking that if we have the best qualified Utica police officer candidates to serve this city who can pass the exams, rigorous training, and the attention to detail that are required, then by all means, please consider them over all the rest. But we cannot dictate to them where they live. There is something called free will. Therefore, for the sake of justice and service by the members of our outstanding public safety departments, I am appealing to the Utica Common Council to lift the residency requirements for the Utica Police Department. Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Hunt, you have a minute and 40 seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. No, just-
Ready?
Continue, yeah.
Okay, I just wish to add along with what Billy has to say. We need to change the residency law to be able to expand the area so that we are able to get people to be in the police department, both men and women. So we need to change this residency law because it restricts. We want the best that there is, and maybe they come from the outlining area, but we need to change the residency law. I ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I apologize- I apologize if I, some of the writing is pretty close together here. Joe Malzak?
McCoots.
What's that?
McCoots.
McCoots, all right.
I'll take it.
Oh, it's a K. There we go. The remaining speakers will have two minutes and 15 seconds apiece. Joe McCoots?
Thank you.
The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name and you'll be given the floor.
My name is Joe McCoots. I'm a resident of West Utica. I'm not very good at public speaking, but I was asked by a couple of people that I spoke with early, because I came tonight to try to get some answers as to what's going on actually with the city of Utica. It says Utica starts with you. I don't believe that. Because right now, it's more like I. People are not, we have absentee landlords, more so than we have property owners. All of a sudden now, we're worried about trees. We've got to get more police. We've got to take care of the issues that are at hand. You've got so many residents now that don't care about their property or anything. Rather than planting trees, I'd rather see Constantino wire all around my property. That's how bad it has gotten right now. I applaud everybody that's here, and I hope that you're all responsible enough to take care of your property that have pride. But there's a lot of people in this city that don't. And we got to start someplace. So that thing there that says Utica begins with you, well, I don't know. The mayor knows all about what's going on. He says, he tells me that he rides around at night. I've yet to see him. He's walking in my house anytime, and you people could let him know that. So I take your time and I applaud everybody here, but we've got to start taking care of the community, not, not the trees and everything else. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Jim Boswell. Good evening. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
I am.
Please state your name and you'll have the floor.
Jim Boswell. I'll be real short. I've been to numerous community meetings. We've heard from many police officers, both at the meetings, as well as at the common council time, as well as out on the street. Fact of the matter is, the only departments in this city that are getting restricted on residency, there's only one, the police department. The fire department by state law cannot be restricted. Why are we restricting the police department? We need the best and we need bodies because we're going to be so short in the next couple of years that we're going to make calls and be waiting a half hour, 45 minutes. The only way you can solve that problem is by striking the residency requirement that was enacted a number of years ago by local law. Common council has the power to do this. Let's do it and get rid of that. Then we won't have waiting for the police in our future. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield back my time.
Reverend Jill Farnham. Please come forward. Thank you, for the record. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
I am.
Please state your name and you'll have the floor.
Thank you. I'm Reverend Jill Farnham Os, and I'm from the Interfaith Coalition of Greater Utica and coming to speak to you about bringing good news to the poor. I want to encourage the common council to consider when they're talking about bail reform, to remember that it's been passed to bring an end to the inequality of our pre-trial treatment of people who are coming and have been arrested. I urge the council to remember that all of our residents deserve fair and speedy justice. We do not want to continue a two-tiered system that treats people with money as less frightening than people who are poor. The new bail reform law was written to bring that good news to the poor, to let justice flow down like water and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Reverend Baugh?
Baugh.
Baugh? Thank you. Good evening. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Thank you very much. You'll have the floor after you state your name.
My name is Reverend Baugh. I'm from Hope Chapel Amy's Zion Church, and I too want to add my voice about bail reform. I feel like in this particular area, we've only heard one side of the story. And to be pulled over, arrested, put in jail, not convicted, you lose your job, you lose where you live, and you don't, and the system doesn't even know if you're guilty or innocent. The person who has to sit in jail is there because he can't make bail. He's poor. And that is not the litmus test of justice. We should not have a two-tiered system. And I'm asking that a fair and balance. And I get law enforcement. I have people in law enforcement. And that, but you cannot bank your retirement and your children's children's future on the backs of black and brown people. And so justice has to be done. And we do have to pay our law enforcement at a level where they don't have to work overtime to afford to live and know that they do the job that they do. And so we want to be fair to everybody, but we cannot do it continually on the backs of black and brown people. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Cascini? Please come forward. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name and you'll have the floor.
I'm Gina Cascini. I'm a resident of South Utica, in the Ridgewood area. I have submitted a letter back in October to the common council regarding some wildlife that roams around the neighborhood that is, in particular, overpopulation of deer and feral cats. I have 15 other households on the street that are very concerned about the health and safety of their pets, their children, and... So anyways, I guess it was filed, I'll give you another copy. It was filed back in November. And I'm wondering during this time where we're looking for, working on the budget and that, I asked in the letter if something could be done with animal control and helping to rid the feral cats, the deer. People are hitting them with their vehicles. They are roaming and just making their homes in our backyards. It's just a nuisance, like I said, health and safety and a big concern. And we haven't heard anything since that, since it was filed the first time. So just kind of want to follow up on that and bring something back to the street in my neighborhood.
Thank you.
And that's it? Okay, thank you.
Lindsay Bonanza? Please come forward. And just as a note, Ms. Cascini, the clerk will refile that. Thank you. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name and you'll have the floor.
Lindsay Bonanza. I'm also a resident of South Utica, and I recently took over the South Utica Neighborhood Association meetings. I, I would encourage all of you to join those meetings, come to all of them, especially the three-at-large fellows. I think that when we talk about bail reform or grant money that's coming into the city and, and the police department residency issue, I think it's important to cover all the areas of Utica and find out what the people think. The bail reform did come up in our South Utica meeting, and the majority of the people in attendance agreed that the common council kind of didn't have a place voicing a concern about it. And I think that it would have benefited everybody in this room to have heard what some of those folks had to say, and then you could have had conversation with them afterwards so that you would have understood where they were coming from. They had some very good points to bring up. They understood what the reform was meant to do. They understood what the concerns that other people had had, and they thought that it deserved a bigger conversation. So I think that's something that I would highly suggest all of you to do, is go out and see what the actual residents of the city have to say. I'm going to piggyback what the gentleman ahead of me said where it says Utica starts with you. I would agree with him. It does not start with you. It starts with you upstairs. That's it. I don't, I don't see where, and I've, I've said this repeatedly for, for months at this point, I don't really see where we're all coming together as one united group and, and talking about what's best for our entire community. You know, I heard, you know, Jack in the Back say that, you know, this is our community and you're right. And I've said that over and over and over again. Yet, when we make these really big decisions and we put our name on letters that go to the governor and things that could, you know, affect us, we don't make it a group activity. And I think that we need to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Berry? The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, I am.
Please state your name and you'll have the floor.
Diane Berry. I just want to say that, I want to reiterate my comments of two common councils ago, and you can see them on YouTube now. I also want to say that several people said several good things here that I want to back up and agree with, especially the thing about you've been hearing one voice about the cash bail reform laws. You really need to talk to the people who for decades have been fairly severely and negatively affected by the cash bail. This is a real serious problem in some of these communities, and these communities have been devastated by it, and families have been devastated, and I know people who have been. And you have not listened to those people. You have not gone out and listened to them. And I really think you need to be better informed before you put your name to a resolution that has things, that says scaremongering things like endangering the community. Cash bail has been endangering our communities for decades. And I really, I really want you to think about this before you do this. If there had been some reasonable conversation about this, I heard some reasonable conversations. Some people saying, oh gee, you know, with this, with about the discovery part. And I could see why there were some concerns about that part. All of a sudden, we got to like download all our video and, you know, we don't have the resources to do that. Those would have been reasonable comments to make. But that's not what you're doing. You're sending a resolution with scaremongering language to the governor. I, as a citizen of Utica, object to that. And I agree with all the comments said to previous people about bail reform, and I second all those. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Please state your name and you'll have the floor.
My name's Christina Andriata, and I want to comment on a couple of things. First of all, it's not appropriate for elected officials to be commenting on a woman's hair color, or her age, or her beauty. Also, there hasn't been any agenda for these common council meetings posted on the website since January. And that's very frustrating because when it comes to issues like bail reform, there's a lot of people in the city who deserve to know what their elected officials are doing. Let's be clear, it's been said before, it's worth saying again, 70% of people in jail have not been convicted of any crime. They're there because they can't afford bail. Some might eventually be found guilty, but many will also be found innocent. Councilmember LaMedico said in the pre-meeting that he's worried about keeping people who have committed crimes off the streets. Except when bail is assigned, it's not to someone who's been convicted of committing any crime, it's to someone who has been accused. And in this country, we have a presumption of innocence until proven guilty. That should not apply only to rich people. The bail reforms passed at the state level mean it is finally true for poor people as well as for rich people. When people are locked up waiting for trial, it does not help protect the community. It hurts the community. You're left with children missing their parents. You're left with businesses missing employees. You are left with households missing a breadwinner. Families suffer. The community suffers. Poverty increases. And when poverty increases, crime does too. You don't protect a community by caging poor people who cannot afford bail. You protect a community by eliminating poverty. Before you pass something like this, you really should hold a public hearing. And by the way, police officers should absolutely live in the community that they serve. This is something else that absolutely deserves a public hearing. Please don't just carry water for the mayor or for law enforcement. Do your jobs and actually represent the people you are elected to serve. Thank you.
If you could please come forward. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and you'll have the floor.
Patrick Johnson, resident of the city of Utica. And I was here a couple of weeks ago, and I'm here to basically extend another warm invitation to the common council, public residents, anybody here in the circle, to attend the workshop that I'm doing on Thursday, March 19th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the Utica Public Library. The, the invitation is extended this time to the common council because often people in the community ask, where are the people, where are the elected officials? And I say with all due respect, as I did the last time, I know that a couple of you have attended in the past. Celeste was one that vocalized that she's never attended and she will be attending again on March 19th. I also understand that the issue of race and racism is a difficult one for America to grapple with. But I also say that the workshops that I have been privileged to do in the city of Utica, where many of us have lived for a lifetime, often people who did not see the value but came, walked out differently. Captain Kelly, I thank you for sending your police officers to the workshops that I do. Even they, although, and this is not about making anybody do a full transformation, but I think that for police officers, firefighters, people, anybody of any position, you value when you understand people of different ethnicities and racial identities. Utica is a good city, but we do have a problem with race relations. I'm going to end with this, and I do say this again with all due respect. I love the city of Utica. I think many of us do. I also understand that as an African-American man, as a black man, I don't have the luxury of putting this topic on the shelf and walking away. Because racism exists in ways that many people don't see it. It's a good city, but it's not welcoming to everybody, and we have not reached our potential. So this workshop on Thursday, March 19th- So this workshop on Thursday, March 19th, is an atmosphere where we can have honest, deep discussions on race relations and how we can make the city of Utica better. Thank you.
Reverend James Tutturo, if you could please come forward. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Common Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and you'll have the floor.
Reverend James Tutturo, native of Utica, graduate of Proctor High School. I'm here this evening to echo many of the comments that you've heard this evening. I'm in support of the bail reform law that passed and is now in effect in New York State. I do support some changes to it, but not the total replacement of it. I'm a 35-year veteran of the criminal justice system, the Office of Mental Health and Department of Corrections. I've seen firsthand the consequences of mass incarceration and the effect that it has upon our families. Equal justice is very important to me, as the other speakers have mentioned. And I would like to simply state that I hope the common council does not join with the sheriff and the city police chief in the grandstanding that I've seen in the media in recent weeks. I've read the laws, my son's an attorney, and it's very disappointing to see that a lot of it is really just meant to be fake news. Public safety is a very serious issue. Security in prisons is a very serious issue. Mental health is a very serious issue. Poverty is a very serious issue. And family life is a very serious issue. And all of us share this in common. And so I hope that you do not join in the grandstanding with the sheriff and the police chief and others that I've seen in the media. And let this be ironed out quietly and seriously amongst people that are specialists in this field. I also mentor students at Proctor. In the black community, many people in the black community do not want to become police officers. There's just a stigma against it. So then I shift into the fire department. That's a little bit more palatable. So the issue of race relationships is a hot-button topic since 2016. And I want you to know very clearly that I commend law enforcement for everything that you do. I particularly commend the Utica Police Department for getting out of the police cars and walking the night of square and getting to know the people face-to-face, whether they're rich or poor, black or white or Hispanic, regardless of their ethnic background. Knowing your people is very important. Therefore, I want to come down very unexpectedly, clearly, that I think that Utica police officers ought to live in the city of Utica. They need to know who their neighbors are. They need to know who's running the corner store. They need to know everybody.
Mr. Tutturo.
I know everybody.
Reverend Tutturo, that is your time.
That's time.
Thank you. Thank you. Natalie Williams, if you could please come forward. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Common Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name and you'll have the floor.
My name is Natalie Williams. I am a homeowner. At least right now, I'm a homeowner. I've addressed this body two weeks ago. The issues regarding Urban Renewal Committee and their decision to quote-unquote revert the property that I purchased has not been resolved. I think that it certainly should be. I think that what is going on is that this creeping either gentrification of the downtown area has motivated this attempt to grab the building that I have spent blood, sweat, and tears on for a bit over a year. A manipulation of laws which are gotchas for black people and immigrants who hope for the American dream and put everything they've got into a city building in an effort to fix it up and then do not manage to fix it within a one-year time limit and even ask for, in my case, ask for time to fix it up and then the city turns around and says, no, we're taking it back, are an outrage. I'm going to be dealing with this. I've already, I think, expressed passionately that I have been working on repairs for the building, expect to continue to do so, and that the city is morally and ethically on the wrong side of this. And I will take it to whatever form I need to. But of course, the best thing to do is to take it to the media, to take it to the people who are supposed to be representing me. Since I started out being in, I bought a building that was basically a former crack house that was full of junk and spent more than a year fixing it up, and it was in Cornhill. Now the district has been, the map has been redrawn and it is suddenly a downtown property. And now that I'm fixing it up, all kinds of people are interested in it.
Ms. Williams, you have about 15 seconds.
Okay, so that's the story. I'm keeping the building, I'm fixing the building, and I want a fair deal to keep it and not be surprised by the city or this police force, which I believe pretty much is an attack force against black people and immigrants coming after me.
Ms. Williams, that's time. That's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Kavlish. Mr. Kavlish is the final speaker this evening. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Common Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
I am.
Please state your name and you'll have the floor.
Steve Kavlish. There's an old Greek proverb that society grows great when old men plant trees that they never expect to enjoy the shade of. The presentation tonight about the state of our canopy has inspired me. So the next downtown community forum is going to be on April 7th and I'm kind of setting a deadline for our city to come up with a good civic and community engagement plan for helping educate our citizens on how they can be part of this plan. Spring is coming up and, you know, the opportunity for citizens and especially our youth to lead this effort, I think, are great. It's an opportunity to teach the value of sacrifice and patience, to see through things that will take some time to fully mature and to benefit. And I also believe that with the actual scope of this project, with the number of trees that may be possible, it is probably best that citizens lead this effort. So in order to make sure we don't lose momentum on this important issue, I hope to work with the council leaders that are interested in this issue and the city professionals that are working on this to put together a plan with me to make a presentation at the April 7th meeting. Just changing topics quickly, Madison said that the purpose of government is justice and if a government can't even enforce its own idea of what justice is, what good is government's efforts to that? I'm actually speaking about the discovery portion of the, that often gets lumped in with the bail reform. I think it's important that if that discovery law makes it impossible for our own law enforcement to enforce rules because of the administrative burden doesn't make it worthwhile, that is a huge problem. And even though these things might be considered petty or small, that's too much of a disconnect. And we can't say something is illegal and then never actually try to enforce the breaking of those laws. So am I just about out of time?
Yes, you are.
All right. Thank you very much.
I was just about to give you the 10 seconds. Thank you. That was the final speaker this evening. We've already had our common council guests. The minutes. Have the minutes been provided?
Yes. Could I move that we waive the reading of the minutes tonight?
Okay, is there a second? We have a second for Miola. Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay. The reading of the minutes has been dispensed. Do we have communications from the mayor and/or any cash reports? Of course, we do have the controller here today. Thank you for coming. Okay.
You're up.
Anything? We good?
No communications.
All right, reports on the city officers. UPD?
Nothing from the chief.
Bureau of Fire? Thank you. Corporation Council?
Nothing, sir.
Urban and Economic Development?
Nothing.
Thank you very much. Petitions, Remotes, Appeals, and Legislation. First District Council Member and Majority Leader Marie McNeil, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to the Monday's East Utica Concerned Citizens Meeting. I saw a lot of new faces out there and it was really great to see the room filled. We had a lot of great conversation and people's opinions came across very clear from what they want from this community. And I look forward to sharing those opinions with my colleagues. The next East Utica Concerned Citizens Meeting is in May. The April one is not going to be held, so the next one would be the first Monday in May. Going forward, I'd like to introduce the first piece of legislation. It's Resolution Number One. And if the clerk could please read that one?
So the first piece of legislation is, let me look at this, it's a lease, 318.8-1-52.1 for Whitesboro Street. It's a prop, it's proposed lease term for 30 years. The annual rent for this property will be a dollar and it is for coming from the Urban Renewal Agency for the Upper Mohawk Valley Memorial Auditorium Authority. And it is for paving and to maintain the lot to use as a parking for the Nexus Center.
This is the resolution calling for the public hearing Wednesday, March 18th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m.
And I'd like to make a motion to send this to committee?
Okay. Second. Thank you.
The next ordinance is ordinance number two. If the clerk could please read this one?
I know there was some question on the floor. The first piece was the call for the public hearing. Thank you.
Yes.
Ordinance number two. Yep. What's that? Ordinance number two.
I'd like to move this, send this one to committee as well.
Well, do we have a second to introduce it? Do we have a, the first one was calling for the public hearing.
Correct.
Regardless, it was put in committee. You can put a resolution to call for public hearing in committee. That was the motion. All right? This is not the budget, Judge. Okay, so there's a motion to refer Resolution Number One to committee. Was there a second? We have a second. Any opposed to putting the resolution calling for the public hearing in committee?
Both of them.
Any opposed? They have to introduce them both. Okay, Resolution One is in committee. You've now moved ordinance number two.
The next one, it doesn't, it was... No, the next one that I wanted to do was, I believe it's coming out of committee.
No, we still, okay, so ordinance number two is the actual ordinance approving the designation of the Upper Mohawk Valley Auditorium Authority as an eligible qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article 15. That ordinance, I believe, in the pre-meeting conference, you wanted to place in committee.
Yes, I'm sorry. That's what I...
Okay. We have a second from Friend. Any opposed placing ordinance number two in committee? Okay, those have both been placed in committee, the whole. Thank you.
The next one I would like to take out of committee is the Section 2-2-27. If the clerk could read that? It does not have one on the top. It was in committee and...
The original date of the legislation was 2/5/20. It was placed in one of the committees that were disbanded and is being pulled from that committee.
And I asked the clerk to please read it so we could...
Yes, I'm just waiting for a council person to have the legislation. Thank you. Clerk, please read.
Whereas Section 2-2-27 entitled Appointment of Members of Standing Committees was adopted by members of the Common Council of 1986 to be effective January 1st, 1988. And whereas said section provides that the president of the common council may appoint the chairperson and members of all standing committees pursuant to the authority vested in the common council by Section 31 of the Second Class Cities Law. Whereas the common council is de sereous of considering all matters as a committee of the whole and determine the title and membership of said committees. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council of the city of Utica amends and rescinds Section 2-2-27 in its entirety except that it shall retain that the president of the common council shall designate the chairperson of each select committee with the added direction that each member of the common council shall serve as a chairperson of the entitled select committees set forth in its rules of order. Your votes, please.
Well, do we have a second? We have a second for Miola. Any opposed to pulling this from committee? Any opposed? Okay, it's on the floor for a vote.
Can I have the floor?
You may have the floor.
So as far as I understand it, this is not necessary. None of the rules of order that we passed, whenever that was, two weeks ago, four weeks ago, this doesn't change any of how we will proceed in our rules of order. It's not necessary. It's repetitive. And it also furthermore will bind future councils. This legislation will be binding upon all councils going forward beyond ours when despite the fact that we sort of have this general idea that every council should get to choose its own rules of order. So I'll be voting against this legislation.
Okay, any other debate or qualification to vote on the floor? Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce, or actually pull from committee, ordinance number four. It's the ordinance authorizing the permission to build an encroachment upon the city right of Way on Lafayette Street. And if the clerk could read that, please.
All right, so there's a motion to pull this from committee. Is there a second? There's a second for Miola. Anyone opposed to pulling this from committee? This is an ordinance. Clerk, could you please call?
Ordinance authorizing permission to build and encroach upon a city right of Way on Lafayette Street. Whereas Mohawk Valley Health System is constructing a state-of-the-art hospital facility, the building and the city block bounded by Columbia, Lafayette, Broadway, and State Streets. Whereas the building is planned will encroach on the city right of Way on Lafayette Street, set up to align where the curb meets the road. Be it ordained that pursuant to 3.007 of the city charter of the city of Utica permission is hereby given to the owners of the building, Mohawk Valley Health System and their successors in interest to build and encroach upon the city-owned right of Way on Lafayette Street between State Street and Broadway up to the line where the curb meets the south side of the road. Further ordained, this permit shall continue for so long as the building encroaches upon a city-owned right of Way at such time that Lafayette Street between State Street and Broadway is abandoned and sold, the permit shall be moved. Further ordained, this permit is granted upon the express condition that the owner of the building, its heirs, successors, in common shall defend, indemnify, and hold harmless the city of Utica's agents, officers, and employees from any claims whatsoever arising from the use of this permit, the condition, or the location of the building, et cetera. Your votes, please. Nine yeas adopted.
Anything else this evening?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Second District, Councilmember Robert Birmaster, you have the floor. Thank you very much. Third District Councilmember Celeste Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a town hall meeting on February 24th. It was a big success. It was the first time that we had a generalized town hall meeting. Lots of people turned out, including people I had never seen at meetings before, which was particularly gratifying. I am more convinced than ever that the people of Utica want to be engaged and active in their government and in the decisions that make a difference in their lives. So we will be carrying on. We've had several flooding meetings. Now we've had a general town hall. We'll be carrying on with lots more of that kind of thing as time goes forward. We'll be carrying on with lots more of that kind of thing as time goes forward. I do want to remind people that I always have constituent hours on the first, second, fourth, and the occasional fifth Tuesday of the month, when there is a fifth Tuesday of the month, and it's always four to six at the Other Side Gallery located at 2011 Genesee Street. So those constituent hours carry on. And also, of course, I'm always at the South Utica Neighborhood Association meeting, which is always on the second Monday of each month at 6:00 at 11 Barton Ave at Notre Dame Elementary School. So that's first. Second, I want to talk about something quite unpleasant and unfortunate in our city. In the last eight months in the Utica-Rome area, three women have been murdered by their intimate partners. Bianca Devens, Carol Lee DiVoleo in Rome, and now Shante Miller just two weeks ago here in Utica. DiVoleo and Miller both leave behind children who have to cope not only with the loss of their mother, but also have to live with the fact that their own fathers killed their mothers. The grief is unfathomable, and my heart breaks for these children and their families. Shante Miller, two weeks ago here in Utica, was African-American, and it's important for us to know that African-American women are more likely to be the victims of domestic abuse, and at the same time are less likely to be perceived and treated as victims of that violence. This is not to impugn anyone. This is a social-wide problem. It's true across the United States. But it is to acknowledge that a particular social reality, that African-American women deserve more of our protection and support and care, we have to do better. I do want to repeat what Patrick Johnson said. I'm committed to going to the Racism in America and Our Community Workshop, Thursday, March 19th, hosted by Patrick. I'm looking forward to that. It's something I've not found the time to do, but I'm really committed to doing it now. Okay, and on a happier note, the Children's Museum is coming to South Utica, and I couldn't be much more delighted. I'm sure everybody saw this news. It was, the news broke this morning that the Children's Museum and ICAN's offices, some of their offices, are going to be located in what many of us think of as the Meat Cutters Union, at the intersection of the Parkway and Holland Ave. We had a neighborhood meeting last night on March 3rd, and the neighbors on Greenwood Court are excited about this new development in their neighborhood. This is going to create an entire Parkway Recreation Zone, stretching from Valley View to the new NiPA Welcome Center and the Utica Zoo, down to the Parkway Rec Center and all of the various recreational opportunities they have, and then on to the Children's Museum. It couldn't be a better location. It's also located very centrally in the city. Lots of people will be able to access it. It is on the edge of South Utica, but also bumping right up against Corn Hill, so families in Corn Hill are going to be able to just walk across the street and go to a brand-new, state-of-the-art, 21st-century Children's Museum. So it's really terrific, and I commend all the hard work that ICAN, the Community Foundation, the Mayor's Office, that everybody brought to making this a reality. It's just super. Thank you.
Thank you. Fourth District, Councilman President Protem, Frank Miola.
Thank you, Mr. Pres, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to give everybody an update. I'd like to thank all the department heads for attending our budget meeting. I know some of us had to wait a little while, while others were going through their budgets. I'd like to thank you for all your patience, attending, your views on our budget, what you think that we may be able to do in the future, and your ideas. Once again, thank you very much for attending, and thank you for all your hard work on the budget this year. Next council meeting, we'll be finalizing our budget, reviews, and amendments, and we'll be bringing them to the table. Mr. President, I'd like to bring to vote a piece of legislation for today's meeting, Resolution Number Six, Appointing a Commissioner of Deeds, Alex Torres.
Yep, we're good, though. Resolution Number Six. Is there a second?
Yes.
All right. Any opposed to bringing Resolution Number Six to a vote? Your votes, please.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I have another piece of legislation I'd like to bring to vote, Resolution Number Thirteen. It's concerning the Board of Estimate Review. I'm very proud to sponsor Mr. Dave Williams. As everybody knows, he used to be our prior, prior assessor, and he knows his job. I'm glad that I welcome him on the board and his wealth of knowledge that he's bringing to the board. Mr. President, can you bring, please bring this to vote?
Would you like to read the legislation, please?
Resolve pursuant to Section 523 of Real Property Tax Law, the following person is hereby appointed as a member of the Board of Estimate Assessment Review, commencing the remainder of the current five-year term, which commences 10/1/17, ending September 30th, 2022, David Williams.
Is there a second? We have a second for McNeil. Any opposed to bring this to a vote? Your votes, please.
Nine yeas adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Do you have anything else this evening?
Mr. President, may I break and come back to a couple pieces of legislation that I meant to introduce?
Does anyone have an issue with that?
Sorry about that. I'm still getting used to this idea that the legislation comes up right after...
So we have a motion to give the floor back to Councilperson Friend. We have a second from McNeil. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, I have two pieces to bring up. One is Resolution Number Twelve. This would appoint Nick Mancari to the Board of Assessment Review. So I'd like to move that legislation.
Would you like to read the legislation?
Sure. Resolve that pursuant to Section 523 of the Real Property Tax Law, the following person is hereby appointed as a member of the Board of Assessment Review, commencing the remainder of the current five-year term, which commenced on 10/1/16, ending on September 30th, 2021, Nick Mancari.
Is there a second? We have a second from Burmester. Any opposed? Okay, your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
And then I have a second, Mr. President. I'd like to move, resolve that pursuant to Section 523 of the Real Property Tax Law, the following person is hereby appointed as a member of the Board of Assessment Review, commencing the remainder of the current five-year term, which commenced 10/1/19, ending on 10/30/2024, Michelle Thompson, 10 Fory Drive, Utica, New York, 13501.
Is there a second to the introduction of that piece? We have a second from DeBrango.
Resolution...
No one's opposed. Your votes.
That's how you read it.
Exactly. Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Hang on, hold on, hold on. Could you please vote Councilperson Friend? Call it. Thank you.
Nine yeas adopted.
Anything else this evening?
No, thank you.
Okay, back to Fourth Ward. Anything else this evening? All right, Fifth Ward, Councilmember Delvin Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to just thank those that came out tonight to talk about the issues that are important to them, whether it be the residency, or bail reform, or absentee landlords. It's really exciting when we have members of our community come out to Joyce to just talk about anything that, that is on their mind pertaining to city business. I want to also thank the, the presentation about trees. I know that's something that Councilman Williamson has been invested in, and a few of the other at-large members. Streetscaping is also something that I talked about when I was running. It's something that I think is important to the Corn Hill area, and so I was excited about the presentation about trees, and look forward to working with members of the Common Council to see how we can transform Corn Hill and get some of those trees planted in the inner city. I also want to mention about residency. It's something that, that we have been talking a lot about in Corn Hill, all over the city. And I want to make the point that, in terms of residency, I've been talking with UPD and others about the formation of a community board that would hopefully mitigate some of the concerns about residency laws that we're seeing, and always promoting the essence of community policing. And I think that is something that all of us are committed to. And I think at the core of the arguments in both directions about residency, it comes about how can we ensure that there is a, a strong connection and relationship between our public safety officers, our UPD, and the community? And so that's something that I've been thinking a lot about, particularly now that it has been a hot topic issue in the media. Also want to invite members of the Common Council to go to Patrick Johnson's meeting on the 19th. It's always a good conversation, always eye-opening, and every time that I go, I leave that room gaining a new perspective that I did not have when I arrived. There might be some other legislation being presented, and I'll save some of my comments for that moment. Mr. President, I'd like to pull some legislation out. Resolution Three, Resolution Approving Intermunicipal Agreement with the County for the Dick Miller Basketball League Program.
Okay, can you please read the legislation?
Can I read it in part?
You can summarize. Please read the first two clauses and the resolved.
Whereas the County of Oneida has received a grant from the New York State Office of Children and Family Services, and whereas the City of Utica Youth Bureau provides the Dick Miller Basketball League Program, and whereas the City of Utica Youth Bureau Dick Miller Basketball League Program has the appropriate goals to meet the goal, to meet the goals of the OCFS Grant, specifically teaching youth the fundamentals of basketball and good sportsmanship. Be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby authorizes and approves acceptance of the proposed intermunicipal agreement in substantially in the same form as attached thereto, hereto.
Been introduced. Is there a second? We have a second from Miola. Any opposed to the introduction of this legislation? Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
I also like to pull Resolution Four, Resolution Approving Intermunicipal Agreement with the County for the Juvenile Aid Program.
We have a second from Beatrice. Any opposed to introducing this as reviewed in caucus, sorry, pre-meeting conference? Please summarize before the vote.
Reading in part, whereas the County of Oneida has received a grant from the New York State Office of Children and Family Services, whereas the City of Utica Youth Bureau provides the Juvenile Aid Program, be it resolved, the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby authorizes and approves acceptance of the proposed intermunicipal agreement in substantially in the same form as attached hereto.
Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Also like to pull Resolution Five, Resolution Approving Intermunicipal Agreement with the County for Summer Recreation Safety Program.
Second? We have a second from Beatrice. Any opposed? All right, please summarize.
Reading in part, whereas the County of Oneida has received grant from New York State Office of Children and Family Services, whereas the City of Utica provides a summer recreational safety program, be it further resolved, the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby authorizes and approves acceptance of the proposed intermunicipal agreement in substantially in the same form as here to, as attached hereto.
Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Sixth Ward, Councilperson Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I want to thank everybody tonight who spoke at the public commentary. You know, there's been a lot of talk the last couple of months or so about public commentary, and tonight I think we've seen how, you know, if we agreed or we disagreed, I think everybody did a great job in, in comment. Second, I would like to speak for Gina Cuginari. I feel your pain, and I, I promise you, I'm going to be working on this. I have a couple cases in North Utica with the, the feral cats, so I will be looking into helping, helping her out the best I can, and working with the, the council. We've already talked about that. I've talked to the judge about it also, and so hopefully we can get something done with that. I'd also like to thank the mayor and all those department heads for attending our North Utica meeting the other, last week. They did a great job explaining the budget, and they took time out of their day to come and go over everything, and I think it was very well-received. I'd also like to thank Police Chief, Deputy Chief Noonan, Officer Curly, and Hartnik for coming to our meeting and speaking on the residency. And I also want to thank Lucretia and Bill and Jim Boswell tonight for speaking their piece. I think, I, I agree with them. The, the last thing I want to say is I will be supporting Councilman Lamontico's legislation for bail reform. I want to make it clear that I am not against bail reform. However, the way this, the way this legislation is written, I believe it's a safety issue. I believe it takes our officers off the street by having to, with the time limits that they need to have their reports in, and I just think that it needs to be reworked. And then lastly, we will be having, you know, we have our North Utica meetings. It's the last Monday of every month. I will give you the guest speaker next week when I, in our next council meeting, because it'll be before the meeting. I will have my office hours, half hour before. And going forward, I also am going to be having, if there's certain, certain issues, I'm not going to have any set days in concrete or anything, but if there's a set time or a set project, I will be having a town hall. It will be in the paper, so the people of North Utica or the people of the Sixth Ward will know what the issue is, and we can come and discuss it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman-at-Large and Minority Leader Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank the forestry people coming out, opened their eyes a lot of what's going on in our city with the canopy, as well as maybe helping with water mitigation, which is a big issue now, and with our paving, cooling our streets down with a nice canopy and putting the proper trees in, and the aesthetics. Also, you know, I have to concur with, with the Sixth Ward Councilman, I think at the end Reverend Totoro, I got that right? Reverend Totoro, you out there? I, I agree with him, because I think some things need to be revamped a little bit, and I'm glad it's going back to the New York State to, to come up with a plan to try to fix some of the loopholes in that. So, and also Captain Kelly.
Yes.
What is the plan, or is there any idea what we can do? I know it's in your purview, because we want people out there shooting the deer and, or shooting the cats in the middle of a suburb. What do we, I mean, what's the plan? Is there a plan from the UPD and how we can deal with this situation? With the feral cats and the deer coming into the, into Ridgewood area and, you know, there's, there's some really forested areas that border, and a lot of deer are coming in into areas. Is there a plan, or is there anything? Okay, can we, can we have something in two weeks at our next, you know, something they can come up with?
Sure.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilman-at-Large, Jack Lamontico, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I talk about the resolutions and the ordinance that I'm going to be playing today, I'd like to first give my condolences to the Santa Cruz family. Pat Santa Cruz, gentleman that I grew up, about $3 down from my house, passed last week. Reason I mention is that Pat was an extraordinary gentleman, and I think I need to mention it. Pat was born down in New York City. He was, actually, his, his parents were in a vaudeville act, and when he was two years old, he contracted polio. And even with polio, is, is, he, he still was able to create a fantastic life for himself and his family. and his family. He got involved in singing at, at a young age, and the years he sang at the El Trincas Manor, he was the lead singer there in the Band O Rosa, he was involved in that. But here's a man that, you know, both his arms and hands were totally paralyzed per se, but he raised a fantastic family, Alberta, a young pet who perished earlier in his life, Albert and Louis, he done wonderful. He came to Utica in the early 60s, he opened up a little sweet shop. While he was doing that, he went to school, he became a teacher in the Utica Public School System, was a tremendous teacher, I've talked to many students that had him. And, you know, he just came from a long way. After he conducted polio, his parents died, they put him in a home there, he was in a hospital for five years with the polio, but, you know, he persevered, and many people in the city loved him, and, and we're going to miss him a lot. And once again, condolences to, to the Santa Cruz family, and he was a wonderful man. So rest in peace, Pat, thank you.
Thank you.
The first thing I'd like to read and move would be proposed Resolution 11. It's a Board of Assessment Review Appointment.
You may read.
Okay, result, I can't read as quick as Celeste. Resolve that pursuant to Section 523 of the Real Estate Property Tax Law, the following person is hereby appointed as a member of the Board of Assessment Review commencing the remainder of the current five-year term, which commenced on 10/1/2015 and ending on September 30th, 2020.
You could just read the name, don't read the rest.
And it would be Miranda Kipper.
Second?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any, any opposed to moving this? Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. The second thing I'd like to talk to is about the, bringing out my, my resolution on bail reform. Before I do that, I'd like to say something, first of all.
So would you like to make a motion to pull it out of committee?
Thank you.
Is there a second to that? We have a second from Beatrice. Any opposed for pulling this from committee? Any opposed? One opposed, please, Mark McNeil, please.
Just as.
Thank you, it's out of committee, by the way.
Thank you. As some of the speakers had mentioned, this is a well-intended piece of legislation by our Assembly and Senate, but it was purely legislated, it wasn't vetted, and I'm not looking to get rid of it, I'm not looking to end it. As we're asking the people in Albany to go back and fix it, there's many reasons that we'd like them to fix it. First of all, for the safety of the public, because there's some issues with that. Second of all, it totally has stripped the police and the district attorney of any time to develop their discoveries on these cases, which in turn is going to create poor cases, and a lot of these people that actually did commit these crimes are going to walk because they, that we really didn't have the, the time to actually do a good job on, on these cases. I'm not asking, again, to get rid of it. And some people had mentioned in my, in the resolution that I might embellish enough by putting some of the crimes in there, like promoting obscene sexual performance by a child, possessing of obscene sexual performance, failure to register a sex offender, patronizing a person for prostitution in a school zone. Well, I think those, those things, the judge should be able to decide if he wants to put that, if he wants to hold bail. What we've done in, on this legislation is totally taken the, the ability of the judge to actually look at each case individually. As I had mentioned earlier, these laws aren't cookie cutter laws, you have to look at each and every individual, is he a repeat offender? What's his history? And then decide from there, but we've taken that away from the judges. And all I'm asking is the legislation to go by, to go back, excuse me, take a look at this and fix it, and whatever they come up with, I'll be happy with, because it's the law. So as I read this, I'd like to read this and then move it.
It's out of committee, so read the legislation, please.
Okay, and I'm going to read it as amended.
It was already introduced, the place.
Thank you. This is sponsored by myself, Debrango, Miola, Beatrice, Burmaster, McNeil, and Williamson. Urging the state of New York to immediately amend bail and discovery reform laws that have endangered the people of New York and revised decades of bipartisan progress in reducing crime. Whereas protecting the people from harm by enforcing the rule of law is a foundation role of government, and whereas county governments are vested by the state of New York with the responsibility to protect the most vulnerable among us, including the socially economic disadvantage to disabled, the elderly, and children. Whereas no group is more vulnerable than the victims of crime. And a just society demands that crime victims should recognize, should be recognized as the key participants within the criminal justice system and be treated with dignity, fairness, and respect. And whereas for the past 25 years, the state of New York has committed itself to reducing crime and succeeded, as evidenced by the official U.S. Department of Justice Uniform Crime Reporting Statistics, showing that New York transformed from the second most dangerous state in New York, in America, excuse me, in the early 1990s, to the safest large state in America by the early 2000s. And whereas in the final stages of adopting its fiscal year 2020 budget, the state of New York enacted sweeping criminal justice reforms, including the elimination of cash bail for many crimes and the imposition of stringent discovery mandates on police and prosecutors. And whereas, under bail reform beginning January 1st, 2020, judges were no longer permitted to set bail for many crimes, which means those that have committed these crimes can no longer be held in jail after their arrest and will instead be released back into the general public. And whereas these crimes include those that result in the death of innocent people, including several categories of homicide, manslaughter, resulting in those responsible for these deaths being released back into the midst of grieving families. And whereas the crimes for which bail cannot be set include making a terrorist threat and money laundering in support of terrorism in the third degree and fourth degree, resulting in those who have supported terrorism, terrorism and threatening to commit acts of terrorism being released immediately from the police custody. And whereas the crimes for which bail cannot be set include promoting obscene such, sexual performance by a child, possessing obscene sexual performance by a child, failure to register as a sex offender, and patronizing a person for prosecution, prostitution in a school zone, resulting in dangerous child predators being released back into our communities. And whereas other serious crimes for which bail cannot be set include reckless assault by a, of a child, by a daycare provider, criminal sale of controlled substances to a child, abandonment of a child, and criminal possession of a weapon on school grounds, resulting in those who have physically harmed or endangered children being freed from supervision. Whereas additional crimes for which bail not can be set shockingly include female genital mutilation, stalking in the second degree, aggravated harassment resulting in those who have violated women being returned to the company of their victims. And whereas also included among the crimes for which bail not can be set are endangering the welfare of a vulnerable elderly person, resulting in the potential for further endangerment of seniors. And whereas the crimes for which bail cannot be set also include endangering the welfare of incompetent or physically disabled person, resulting in exposure of these defenseless individuals to repeat offenses. Whereas other violent crimes for which bail cannot be set alarmingly include assault in the third degree, aggravated vehicular assault, and other crimes of physical violence against people. And whereas no additional crimes, whereas additional no-bail crimes include burglary of a residence, resulting in the immediate, immediate release of these individuals back into the neighborhood they are targeted. And whereas the crimes for which no bail can be set unexpectedly include bail jumping and unlawfully fleeing a police officer in a motor vehicle, resulting in appearance tickets being issued to the very individual who have demonstrated propensity to knowingly and intentionally evade the law. And whereas all the offenders mentioned here, herefore are at a risk of not showing up in court, thereby placing a burden on public employees who under this law are required to send multiple court appearances. Reminders to these offenders, as well as police officers and district attorneys, who must commit resources to tracking and pursuing those who evade prosecution. And whereas the discovery mandates imposed by the state of New York require police and district attorneys to turn over voluminous trial-related material to defense attorneys within 15 days, creating a mandate that will inevitably be, not be achieved in some cases and will result in the inability of the people to prosecute cases against criminal defendants. And whereas New York State's Chief Law Enforcement Officer, Attorney General Letitia James, has testified there will be implementation difficulties because prosecutors across the state lack the resources required to fully comply and discover, with discovery mandates. And whereas Attorney General James has testified her, her own office, which carries a limited criminal caseload, lacks resources required to fully comply with discovery mandates and therefore needs an additional $10 million in state funding. And whereas the issue mentioned hereafter unindoubly impacts past, present, and future victims of crime in a negative manner, and in doing so, the bail and discovery forms adopted by the state of New York will themselves further victimize these innocent victims. And whereas these bail and discovery laws in their current form represent a clear and present danger to society, will tilt the scales of justice in favor of criminals and away from crime victims, will reverse decades of bipartisan progress made by the state of New York in reducing crime. And whereas the fundamental responsibilities of governor to protect the vulnerable in society demands that the shortcomings in these laws be remediated, now therefore be resolved that the Utica Common Council urges the state of New York, Governor Andrew Cuomo, and the evolved state agencies to immediately amend their laws and be further resolved that the Utica Common Council hereby demand that the following improvements to these laws be implemented as soon as possible. One, given the judgeability to impose bail when appropriate for all crimes enumerated herein, increase the discovery timeline from 15 days to a minimum of 45 days, phase in discovery reform by applying these new mandates to misdemeanors effective immediately and felonies effective immediately. Require the court appearance reminders are sent out to defenders, but also to the victims of their crimes, and extend appropriate dignity, fairness, and respect to crime victims by soliciting input from victims' advocate organizations and considering their suggestions for improving these laws, and be a further resolved that the city, the Utica City Common Council asks all counties of the New York State to urge their state representatives to take immediate action on foregoing, foregoing issues and be a further resolved to the leaders of the New York State. Thank you. I'd like to move this for vote.
It's on the floor, is there any debate?
Yes.
Or discussion?
Yeah, I'd like.
Is this a vote qualification or beginning of debate? Is this a, is this a qualification of vote or?
No, I'd like to debate this motion. I'd like to debate the legislation.
You have the floor.
Okay, Councilman Moody, I'm going to yield the floor to Councilman Moody on the understanding that he'll give it back to me when he's done.
Councilman Moody, you'd like the floor?
This is, yeah, this is just an amendment, not a debate. The Attorney General is not Letitia, it is Letitia James.
All right, is there a second?
I yield back to Councilperson.
To the amendment? We have a second from Miola. Any opposed to correcting the spelling of the Attorney General's name? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so as of today, March 4th, 2020, bail reform is exactly 54 days old. We don't know, we can't know, and I do just want to say, know is a strong word, know, not believe. I don't really care what we believe, I care what we know, what we can have evidence for. We don't know how well this legislation, the bail reform, is or isn't working. We can't know. The resolution takes as part of its premise that suddenly people are being released after committing dangerous crimes. In fact, people have always been released for the crimes listed in this resolution. For every single one of the crimes listed in this resolution, people have always been released, right? Middle-class wealthy people were released on bail, and where was the outrage then about all the dangerous people being put back out onto the street? Right, so are wealthy and middle-class people by definition not dangerous, and poor, black and brown people are? Right, that's what it looks like to me. The bail reform legislation that took place on January 1st, 2020, was intended to end a two-tiered system of justice, one in which middle-class and wealthy people could be arrested for crimes and then remain free while awaiting trial, and another one in which people unable to come up with their ransom, I'm sorry, I mean bail, had to wait in jail until the criminal justice system could give them their day in front of a judge. This is terrible. In 2018, there were on average 24,000 people in jail on any given day in the state of New York, and 70% of them had not been found guilty of anything, right? They were, from a legal point of view, perfectly innocent. And this, this idea of being innocent until proven guilty, it's not simply some kind of generosity that we extend towards those accused of crimes. It's the bedrock of a free and democratic society. Innocent until proven guilty is the bedrock of being a free democratic people, in which the state should not have the power to simply lock people up while it takes its time to try them for their alleged crimes. Kings, despots, tyrants have always used this power, have always had the power to lock people up before they're found guilty of crimes. We should not have that power. This resolution several times, and in one place is in the sixth paragraph says, refers to things like those who have committed these crimes. This completely violates the presumption of innocence, completely violates our fundamental democratic principles in this free society. It completely goes against the Constitution of the United States, it's unpatriotic, it's un-American, and I'm going to stop now before I get any angrier. This is the most un-American, unpatriotic bullshit thing I have ever seen.
All right, is there any?
I don't yield the floor.
Mr. President, I yield the floor.
I'd like to not yield the floor, I haven't yielded yet.
No, you still have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I also just want to point out, every crime for which bail reform is directed, it only directs itself at non-violent misdemeanor crimes, right? So Councilperson Lametico, when he was reading the legislation, went to a lot of trouble and care to enumerate all the various crimes that this covers. What he didn't say anywhere once in this legislation is to make the distinction between misdemeanors and felonies.
Are you?
I yield the floor.
Thank you very much. Councilperson Beatrice, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. President.
Please address the chair, remember, to address the chair with any comments, not personally. You're debating the motion to vote.
The only thing I would like to, to reply to that, everything she says, she may be right with and she may be wrong with. However, the one part of the reason, my biggest concern with this, is you have people on the street who, let's say some are guilty and some are not, if, within 14 days, if the police cannot file a report, the case is dismissed. That's my problem. And it's taken our police officers off the street, in their car, to do this reporting. Okay, there's my problem, okay? Anything else that you have to say about the rich got out and the poor didding? I will agree with that. That's why when I agreed to vote for this, my point was, I'm not against bail reform, I'm the way, I'm against the way it's written, okay? They need at least 30 days to be able to prepare, 30 to 45 days to be able to prepare their case. You can't prepare a case in 14 days, and if you can't get out there, the person goes free. So that's, that's my gripe with it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I've heard all of my colleagues. Yeah, I, um, I've heard all of my colleagues say that they're not against bail reform, but they're against bail reform as it is written. And the troubling thing about it is that while they have said that with their words, right, what is presented before me on paper is something totally different, and it makes me ask the question as to who wrote this? Because if you say one thing that you believe in bail reform, but something is written on paper, our question as to the authorship of this, I'll leave that one aside. The first thing is that I want to reiterate the point that I'm committed to public safety. And my vote tonight does not weigh on that commitment to public safety. In fact, it is, I view, a way to show that I'm committed to the safety of the entire city. The core of the state legislation, right, we have to keep that in mind, is to eliminate cash bail in this state, which means that bail is instituted and by nature, bail is that if you are accused of a crime, by definition, bail means you are released. The only difference that we have now is that we don't have cash bail for misdemeanors, cash bail for nonviolent offenses. And this whole notion that the judge does not have discretion is not entirely true because the judge can still set non-monetary pre-trial conditions for persons that have committed crimes. In addition to that, violent crimes can still have cash bails in the state of New York, and that's fact, that's not opinion. So we have to keep those things in line. Now, that's one issue about cash bail and the bail reform that the state is doing. The other issue is the discovery laws and the 14-day or 15-day that the police department and the DA have to turn over all of this information. I do think that that is a short window. I know families, right, who have to deal with that. However, what the DA doesn't tell you, and I'm not saying that, that, that we don't have to look at the timing, DA doesn't tell you though, that they can make a motion before the judge, right, to retain the names of those people who have committed the crimes. They don't have to release every single thing, they can still retain the names of the persons who committed those crimes if they deem, right, that it is a safety issue. So there, there is a lot with the law, and, and it's, and it's not just copying it, but it's actually looking at the state law to understand what actually is presented today. So at the court, Celeste has made all the arguments that, that, and I won't waste anyone's time because everyone's going to vote the way they're going to vote. However, I don't think that this should be a resolution, I want to say that. I think it should be a letter signed by members of the council that agree with it. I also want to make the point, I also want to make the point, that the resolution as it stands become propaganda and fear mongering, and what should have been was a resolution that acknowledged the need of bail reform in this state, that identified the legislative problems within the bail reform, not fear mongering and say, we needed bail reform, here is what we have, here is where it's weak, and here is our proposals, not what we have before us that just perpetuates a narrative that is not necessarily the same of what we are experiencing and seeing in our city. I yield.
Uh, we've now had someone speak against, for, against. Is there anyone else on the floor that would like to speak for this so that the debate is qualified? Any, anything else from the floor?
Let's vote.
Okay. Uh, hold, hold on.
I got one, sir.
Well, yeah, okay.
You know, I keep on hearing this poor brown and black people, there's other races besides brown and black people, and I get offended by that because there's other races that are poor, not this black and brown people. So that shouldn't be the case all the time, okay?
Okay. You had a motion.
I'd like to move to that, I'm not quite, I'm not sure exactly how to word this, but in terms of the final resolution about the city clerk.
Sorry, about the city clerk sending this letter. I would like that letter to reflect the, the breakdown of the votes so that it not be a, you know, that we're not reporting, so I don't know how to word that though.
So I was actually, before we brought this to a vote, I was going to make the same request from the floor, I can't make a motion, but this, councils have sent letters prior, and who wanted to sign that, did sign it, whoever didn't want to sign it, didn't sign it. Um, so, um, if, if you'd like me to rephrase that, uh, there's a motion on the floor to include the vote record with the resolution as forwarded to the list as a procedural note for the clerk. Do we have a second? We have a second from Moody. Any opposed to that? Okay.
I'd, I'd like to say one thing on that.
Okay.
It's going to say who it's sponsored by, so they'll see who voted for, yes for it. Thank you.
No, actually, the sponsor is, has nothing to do with the vote. Uh, we've actually had people pull things from committee who sponsored things, who then voted no for them prior. So the vote record is a very separate thing, uh, so are, are you opposed to including the vote record?
I propose to go the way it sits right now.
All right, so we have one opposed. Uh, the vote record will be included. All right, bring this to a vote, please. Clear the board.
Clear the board.
Thank you. Okay, your votes.
I just got confused by his, what, what's the motion? The motion is?
The motion was to include the record of the votes.
No, 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 that's not what we're voting on now.
Hold on, hold on, back up.
What are we voting on now?
Point of order you've requested. So, clear the board first of all. There was a motion from Councilperson Friend, which was seconded by Moody to include the vote record of who voted yea or nay on said resolution when forwarded to the officials listed in this resolution. That vote was approved, that motion was approved, eight yays, and the vote record will be included. Now we are voting on the bail reform resolution as read by Councilperson LaMedico. Your votes, please.
Seven yays adopted.
Thank you. Councilman LaMedico, do you have anything else before we move on to Councilman DeBrango?
That's it, thank you.
Councilman DeBrango, you have the floor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. President.
That's, that works.
I, uh, I don't have anything else to say, and I think we've, we've all discussed.
Okay.
But I do want to bring out, I want to move some legislation.
All right, we've got a Board of Assessment Review Appointment, I believe you'd like to move.
Yes, Resolution Number Nine, sir.
I think your microphone is either not close enough or not on, one or the other. All right, so move it, move it close to you.
Hello? Hello?
There you go, yeah, just move it up a little bit more. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, yes.
Board of Assessment Review Appointment, resolved that pursuant to Section 523 of the real property tax law, the following person is hereby appointed as member of the Board of Assessment Review commencing the remainder of the current five-year term, which commenced on 10/1/18 and ending on September 30th, 2023, Barbara Clark.
All right, so this is moved, but before this is introduced, can we please have a motion to waive the Thursday rule? We have a motion from Councilman Miola, second from Moody. Any opposed to waiving the Thursday rule? At this time, I believe all of the legislation that we have left is, uh, subject to the Thursday rule waiver. Can we call for a motion to waive the Thursday rule for the remaining legislation? All right, we have a second? All right, if you'd like to restate motions, please turn your microphone and do so, otherwise I'll have to restate it, thank you. Uh, any opposed? All right, it's waived. So there's a motion to introduce this Board of Assessment Review Appointment, a second, please. We have a second from McNeil, any opposed to introducing that legislation? This is the Board of Assessment Review Appointment for Barbara Clark, your votes.
Nine yays adopted.
Anything else?
Yes, there's, uh, ordinance number 14, I believe this is, uh, originally sponsored by Councilman Miola, that is now full council.
All right, so I'm, I am going to, um, change the order of business here so that this can be introduced in a little different way. We haven't introduced the actual annual estimate yet. So, um, would someone like to move the piece of legislation which introduces the annual estimate for 2020, 2021?
Yes, I'd like to move that to the table, Mr. President.
Okay, the annual estimate for 2020, 2021. Uh, would someone like to summarize it, would you like the chair to read?
You can read into the record at the time of voting, sir, so you'd have to read into the record right now? Yes, in its entirety, when we're going to vote on it.
All right, so I'll just summarize. This is the ordinance which will, if passed, approve the annual estimate for the city of Utica for 2020, 2021. Let it be known that the amount of the final annual estimate is not yet amended as there may be amendments prior to its voting. Uh, would you like to lay this on the table, put it in committee, what do you, what would you like?
Mr. President, I'd like to lay it on the table, please.
All right, motion to lay this on the table. Is there a second? We have a second from Friend, any opposed? The annual estimate, 2020, 2021, it's been laid on the table. Would you like to move the public hearing for said annual estimate as well prior to the introduction, deduction of that amendment?
Yeah, we got to move it.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the public hearing that's set for the annual estimate. Would you like to read into the record, sir? Go ahead.
Sure. Ordained that on Wednesday, March 18th, the Common Council will hold a public hearing in the Common Council chambers, City Hall at 7:00 PM for such persons that wish to be heard in reference to the annual estimate of the city of Utica for years 2020, 2021, which was submitted to the Common Council on or before February 20th, 2020 by the Board of Estiment Portionment pursuant to Section 7 dot 001 of the City Charter and the 46th Year Community Development Block Grant Program for the fiscal year 2020, 2021 on file in the office of the city clerk for examination until such hearing. Further ordained that the city clerk is hereby directed to cause notice of such hearing to be published in the official newspaper three times prior to said meeting with the Common Council. Your votes, calling for the public hearing. Actually, a second to move this legislation to the introduction of. We have a second from Friend, any opposed? It's now introduced, now we'll have your votes.
Nine yays adopted.
All right, Councilman DeBrango, I believe you have an amendment that you'd like to introduce.
Yeah, I have to find it now, I have a lot of paperwork there, hold on. Number 14, wherever it is. Okay, I have it.
All right.
Common Council changes in 2020 dash 2021, ENA-approved annual estimate, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Counselor.
Mr. President?
What's that?
I'd like to, I defer to the clerk to read it, thank you.
Oh, clerk, let me read it.
This is the Common Council changes in 2020 to 2021, ENA-approved annual estimate. Now therefore be ordained that the annual estimate is hereby amended as follows. Um, this is a rationale for funds for stormwater mitigation throughout the city. Um, it's 50, $50,000 from non-property tax items and infrastructure for $50,000 to Stormwater Capital LA. Your votes, please.
Well, sir, are we voting on this or placing this in committee?
If it's, if it's full council's sponsors, I'm assuming full council.
Yeah, I said it earlier, full council.
Absolutely.
Can we have full council?
I'd like to, I'd like to just let the public know that what we're doing is trying to move some money, $50,000 for stormwater mitigation, you know, with all the floodings that we had, so we're putting some money aside. So, uh, if something does occur, we might be able to help out financially, so we'll have that money set aside for that. Thank you.
Okay, and then I'd like to read into the record, um, non-property tax items account A403-111-001, city sales tax. It's been increased from $14,800,000, that's the estimate, to $14,850,000. Infrastructure has been increased by $50,000, as stated by Councilman DeBrango. Your votes.
Nine yays adopted.
Okay, the First Amendment has passed, how about that? Okay, anything else?
That's all I have for now.
All right, well, we do have two more pieces, I know we're done with the roll call. Um, in committee, it was discussed that there was an ordinance number 15, and there's also a local law that I believe you stated you would want to lay on the table, so if someone would like to do that.
Okay.
In whatever order you choose.
Uh, ordinance number 15, um, there is amendment, I'd like to refer to committee.
All right, so there's an amendment moved by Councilman Miola, is there a second to bring out, uh, I'm sorry, introduce an amendment that will change the funds estimate for police administration account A53121-101, salaries from $557,315 to $548,315. It's a change of $9,000 less. Police administration A53121-802, social security from $46,450 to $45,356. That's a change of $689 to the negative. Purchasing, A51345-408, education from $3,000 to zero, that's a net change of $3,000 to the negative. The next four accounts are increased. Mayor, A51210-101, salaries from $244,421 to $254,543, that's a positive change, $10,122. Mayor, A51210-802, social security from $18,699 to $19,474, that's a positive change, $775. Controller, A51315-101, salaries, $666,076 to $667,741, that's a net change in the positive of $1,665. Controller, A51315-802, social security, it's from $51,147 to $51,274, that's a positive change of $127,000. There's a rationale, salary increase, mayor from $83,378 to $93,500, and controller from $71,243 to $80,500. Would you like to, I believe you wanted to place this in committee, do we have a second for the introduction of this amendment? We have a second from LaMedico. Any opposed to the introduction of this amendment? Okay, motion to place in committee, is there a second? We have a second from Beatrice, any opposed? It's in committee. Local law?
Local law, I'd like to set to the table, it's concerning, um...
I would like you to make a motion to introduce, please.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce the local law.
Thank you. If you'd like to read, unless you want me to summarize it?
Go ahead. You're in the roll tonight, go ahead.
All right, all right. A local law amending subdivisions A and B of Utica City Charter, Section 2 dot 024, introduction local, introductory local law number one of 2020, local law number one of 2020, presented and read March 4th, 2020, adopted by the Common Council, now I'm reading this as stated, but this is going to lay on the table. Adopted by the Common Council by a vote of yays and nays on March 4, 2020, became a local law with the approval of the mayor on its left blank, 2020, after a public hearing on blank, 2020. That's part of the bill jacket, if you will, information. Whereas, be it enacted by the Common Council of the city of Utica, that subdivisions A and B of Utica City Charter, Section 2 dot 024 are hereby amended to read as follows. Section 2 dot 024, salaries generally, A, the city controller shall receive an annual salary of $80,500; B, the mayor shall receive an annual salary of $93,500. Be it further enacted, that this local law shall be effective 45 days after it is adopted. Let the record show, we are not voting on this law right now, we are simply introducing... Uh, is there a second to introduce?
It's a seven-day rule, Mr. President, yes.
Yes, um, we have a sec, all right, so, LaMedico, any opposed? All right, it's introduced, there's a motion to lay on the table from Councilman Miola. We have a second from LaMedico. No one's opposed? This local law will lay on the table with the council.
Mr. President, I just, I just have a question on the March 4th date, the second March 4th, adopting by the council to vote on yays and nays on March 4th, wouldn't it be March 18th? Am I right on that?
The councilman has a point, uh, would you like to take this from the ta- The councilman has a point, would you like to take this from the table and just strike the dates from that portion?
Yes, I'd like to remove the dates on the legislation until...
Motion to take from the table, anyone? All right, LaMedico, second to that? Second? We need a second to take this from the table so we can operate on it. All right, we got a second from Burmaster, no one's opposed? Okay, it's out, please amend.
Motion to remove any dates on the legislation pertaining to our vote, voting date.
Okay, is there a second to that? We have a second from LaMedico, any opposed? Okay, let the record be shown that March 4, in two places in the first paragraph, have been removed from the legislation. Now is there a motion to lay on the table? We have a motion from Miole, second from LaMedico, any opposed? So we'll lay on the table, has to lay on the table for seven days, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, adjourn.
Okay, second? All right, thank you.